Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the September 10th, 2025 City Council Meeting. And I will ask everyone to please rise for the Canadian National Anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in our love us common. Car ton bra se porté l'épée. Il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une époque des plus brillants exploits. Cloud keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, you can be seated. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional lands of Treaty Four Territory, a treaty signed with 35 First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta and Manitoba, the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. The city of Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and their diverse indigenous peoples, whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of City Council and City Administration may be attending the meeting today through videoconferencing. I would like to remind those who are attending through videoconferencing of the following: Please ensure your video camera and microphone are turned off. And when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. Some delegations may be attending the meeting today by teleconference to address City Council on various items on the agenda. And with that, I will call upon Councillor Victoria Flores to make the presentation of Henry Baker Scholarships.
Hello, okay, it is on. Just let me know when we're good to start, all right, okay. Well, welcome, everybody. I am so absolutely excited to be able to present the Henry Baker Scholarships. It is my pleasure to represent City Council today as we honor some of our community's brightest and most exceptional youth. Each year, the city of Regina awards the Henry Baker Scholarship to students who not only excel in their academic pursuits, but also make significant contributions to the community. These students remind us that Regina is not just a place to live, but a place to learn, grow, and thrive. This scholarship also highlights the vital role Regina's post-secondary institutions play in our city's prosperity and shaping the reputational education excellence. The Henry Baker Scholarship celebrates not only academic achievement, but also focuses on volunteer work, community involvement of each student. Today, I extend my warmest congratulations to the 17 recipients of the Henry Baker Scholarship. You have shown outstanding commitment to your studies and to giving back to the community. This year, each student has been awarded $2,000 to support their education at one of Regina's post-secondary institutions. I would like to begin by acknowledging the students from the First Nations University of Canada. First, we have Trina Lathlin. Trina is studying Cree language literacy at First Nations University of Canada, achieving strong academic success. She gives back through community patrols, cultural events, and school activities. Trina hopes to support Cree immersion schools, helping future generations stay connected to their language and culture. She is also committed to raise her children speaking Cree. Congratulations, Trina. All right, so next up, we have Daralyn Klein. Daralyn of Star Blanket Cree Nation is pursuing social work with a focus on community development, youth engagement, and mental health. Her service through Truth and Reconciliation Day, the Orange Buffalo Lodge, and community mentorship reflects her deep commitment to healing and empowerment. A dedicated mother and leader, she aspires to create programs that foster wellness and opportunity for her community. Congratulations, Daralyn. And next up, we have Gabriella Sutherland. Gabriella excelled in her studies and will begin the Advanced Diploma in Dental Hygiene... I'm sorry. Just before that, these are the diplomas for the Saskatchewan Polytechnic. So, starting Saskatchewan Polytechnic, we have Gabriella Sutherland. She excelled in her studies and will begin the Advanced Diploma in Dental Hygiene program this fall. She volunteers with Bright Eyes Stork Rescue and supports youth volleyball programs, showing leadership and compassion. Gabriella hopes to make a meaningful difference in oral health and one day work alongside her sister in the dental field. Welcome, Gabriella. Congratulations, Gabriella. And next up, we recognize the students from the University of Regina. Starting with Amina Takir. Amina is pursuing a Bachelor of Science in Psychology with a minor in Biology, where she has consistently maintained a GPA above 90 and has earned a spot on the Dean's List Honors. She has shown remarkable leadership through the Student Energy in Action for Regina Community Health Search Clinic and the Canadian Blood Services, where she spearheaded a stem cell donor event. She aspires to become a neonatalist physician dedicated to advancing equitable healthcare in Regina. Congratulations. Congratulations. And next up, we have Ali Elawad. Ali has maintained a GPA above 94% and distinguished himself as a scholar and community leader. Balancing studies with service, he has volunteered with humanitarian organizations, mentored peers, and led student societies that foster connection and cultural understanding. Guided by compassion and inspired by family legacy, Ali aspires to a career in medicine that improves the lives of both at home and abroad. Congratulations, Ali. All right, and next, we have Keegan Townsley. Keegan earned a Bachelor of Arts Honors in Political Science and is now pursuing a Master's in Public Policy. He has volunteered with the Political Science and International Studies Department, the Saskatchewan Equity and Parity Project, and local recreation programs for youth and children. Keegan's research on childcare accessibility reflects his commitment to shaping policies that strengthen families and communities. All right, next, we have Kyle Alessandra. Kyle arrived in Canada from Indonesia when she was 10 years old, overcoming language barriers to excel academically and discover a passion for psychology. As a committed volunteer, she supported newcomers at her high school through the Peer Leader Club at the Regina Open Door Program and works to address poverty and social issues with the Star Givers Initiative. Kyle aspires to become a psychologist, advancing mental health awareness, and empowering others to thrive. And my apologies, it is Kylie. Congratulations, Kylie. Next up, we have Mohamed Zafar. Mohamed is pursuing a degree in Human Justice and Pre-Law, driven by a lifelong passion for equity and social justice. She volunteers with Souls Harbor Regina Alternative Measures and founded the South Asian Student Association. Mohamed aspires to attend law school and build a career in advancing fairness, inclusion, and access to justice. Congratulations. And then, next up, we have Mohamed Shahriar Jamil. Mohamed is pursuing a Master's of Applied Science and Environmental Systems Engineering. Mohamed is pursuing a Master's of Applied Science in Environmental Systems Engineering, focusing his research on plastic and food waste management. He has given back through mentoring and volunteer work in both Bangladesh and Regina. Shahriar hopes to advance global sustainable waste solutions through research and teaching. Congratulations. And next up, we have Shiza Hirani. Shiza is a second-year student at the Hill School of Business, pursuing a Bachelor of Business Administration with a focus on human resource management and a certificate in nonprofit sector leadership and innovation. She is a dedicated youth advocate and has founded mentorship initiatives supporting over one hundred young people worldwide. Shiza aspires to shape public policy in Saskatchewan, advancing equity, education, and youth empowerment. Next up, we have Vanessa Torrenstone. Vanessa recently graduated with high honors in Psychology and Women's and Gender Studies and is now pursuing a Master of Science in Clinical Psychology. She is a dedicated community leader and has championed initiatives addressing food insecurity, women's health, and mental well-being. Her graduate research will focus on reproductive and mental health, advancing supports for women and families in Regina. And finally, from the Western College of Remedial Massage Therapies, we have Robert Ross. Robert is completing his first year in massage therapy, where he combines academic excellence with a passion for health and wellness. He is dedicated to helping others volunteers at public health events and supports athletes at tournaments. Robert aspires to open a proactive health clinic in Regina, promoting wellness through massage, nutrition, and fitness. Next, we have Roxanne Javier. Roxanne is pursuing her studies in massage therapy and has distinguished herself through academic commitment and strong leadership in collaborative projects. She has supported peers through tutoring and embraced opportunities to engage in multicultural activities. Roxanne aspires to advance research in her field and contribute to professional commitments through mentorship and continued learning. Alright, can I have one more big round of applause? These are incredible years. And once again, I just want to congratulate all of these years' recipients, including Anika McLaren, Ference Francis, Ho Nguyen, and Robert Snell, who were not able to join us here today. And thank you to all of your hard work and making a positive impact in our community. You're truly deserving, and we're just so proud to have you here and present you this scholarship. I also want to thank all of the educators, administrators, and support staff at Regina's post-secondary institutions for their ongoing commitment, providing high-quality education, and supporting all these incredible students. And that is it.
Okay, we'll just take a moment to set ourselves up for...
Okay, we will carry on with the meeting today. So with that, can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with the following adjustments? Withdraw delegation DE 25-169, Tim Otidju from the Sask Realtors Association, and add delegation DE 25-175, Robert Byers, Namaran Housing; Communication CP 25-140, Tim Otidju from Saskatchewan Realtors Association; Communication CP 25-143, Judith Berissek, RD Bid; Delegation DE 25-167, Kike Duick from Regina; and Communication CP 25-142, Brett Doulter from Regina. Councillor Sickles, thank you. And a seconder, Councillor Zakidniak, thank you. I will call the question. Any opposed? And carried. Okay, can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the August 27th, 2025, and September 3rd, 2025 City Council meetings? Councillor Radens, and a seconder. Councillor Rasovic, thank you. I will call... or sorry, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda is moved and voted upon without debate as one item, regardless of the number of agenda items included in it. The consent agenda for this meeting consists of the following items. CR 25-106, 2025 Midyear Forecast Report; CR 25-107, 2025 Second Quarter Capital Expenditure; CR 25-109, Municipal and School Board Election Expense Sharing Agreement; CR 25-110, Fire Master Plan Update; and CR 25-111, Fire Services Agreements. I will now ask if any member wishes to remove any of those items from the consent agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting. Councillor Mansonelli, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you indicate CR 25-105, or did I...
Yeah, we'll come to that after that's automatically been removed already.
Oh, it has, okay.
So it'll be considered later, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, no, good question. Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So yeah, can I have a motion to approve that list of consent agenda items? Councillor Burton, thank you. And a seconder. Councillor Zakidniak, thank you. Any opposed? And that is carried, thank you. So now, we have another item for the consent agenda item, but I'm going to go to Councillor Fro before I list that item for consent agenda. Go ahead, Councillor Fro.
Yeah, I'd just like to declare a conflict for item CR 25-108, so on that specific item, I'd like to recuse myself.
Thank you, Councillor Fro. Go ahead and recuse yourself, and we'll take care of that item. Oh, Councillor Fro? I just have to record your reason for excusing yourself.
Yeah, sorry, there's several nonprofits listed there that are clients of mine on a consulting basis.
Thank you, Councillor. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve CR 25-108, Community Nonprofit Tax Exemptions 2026, as a part of the consent agenda? Councillor Zakidniak, and a seconder. Councillor Flores, thank you. Any opposed? And carried. Thank you very much. And just because Councillor Mansonelli mentioned it, I'll maybe get the acting city clerk to speak to why item CR 25-105 was removed, just so it's clear for everybody. Go ahead.
Thank you through you, Chair. That item was removed just to a technicality. Council needs to add to part of their decision to give the acting city manager signing authority to sign the attestation that is included in Appendix A of the report.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to public hearing, public notice bylaw and related reports, and we'll start with delegations there. So with that, I would like to call upon delegation DE 25-170, Nick Sackville, and delegation DE 25-175, Robert Byers. You can come to the delegation table. Good afternoon, gentlemen. So I'll read out my usual spiel, and then I'll go to you. So I'll get you guys to introduce yourselves for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, what city or town you both reside in. You'll have five minutes to address city council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions that council members may have for you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
My name is Robert Byers, and I represent Namarind Housing Corporation here in Regina, and I also live in Regina.
Oh, Nick Sackville from Big Block Construction in Saskatoon.
Okay, so good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Byers, I'm the CEO of Namarind Housing here in Regina, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about our request to rezone the property at 11th Avenue and Lorne Street for residential development. As you know, this rezoning application has already been reviewed and approved by the Regina Planning Commission, which recommended that council approve it as well. The recommendation reflects what we believe to be true. This project aligns with the city's planning goals and the city of Regina's own commitment to revitalizing downtown and increasing housing options for Regina residents. Namarind is a nonprofit, indigenous-led, self-sustaining affordable housing provider that has served Regina since 1977. We operate without government funding, relying on our own social enterprises to reinvest profits directly into affordable housing and addressing homelessness. This site is a long-term investment for Namarind. Some in the community may not know this, but we purchased the land more than a decade ago through a combative bid process for nearly $7 million. We later invested another million dollars to remove a derelict building on Lorne Street, always with the vision that the site would one day become housing. Since then, we have engaged with all levels of government to put together a project that is viable, sustainable, and meaningful for this city, but also one that reflects the realities of downtown Regina today, as well as the financial realities, where inflation has skyrocketed over the past number of years, which has made it more and more expensive to build new projects. Our project is now before you, a $22 million development that will deliver 48 units of housing, along with a dedicated building for amenities, meetings, and cultural space. On 11th Avenue, all the units will be commercial-ready to support small businesses when the opportunity arises. Most importantly, this project will bring 48 families to live in the heart of Regina's downtown, supporting local businesses and restaurants, adding to safety and vibrancy, and making full use of nearby assets like Victoria Park, the library, and public transit. This rezoning is what will allow us to take a property that has been a temporary parking lot and transform it into a place where families can live, grow, and contribute to downtown renewal. With the Planning Commission's recommendation in hand, and with your leadership in making housing and downtown revitalization priorities, we're optimistic and respectful in asking for your support. I'll turn it over to our builder, Nick Sackville from Big Block Construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Nick Sackville, I'm the Vice President of Community Development at Big Block Construction, and we're proud to be the builder working with Namarind on this important project. Big Block is a Saskatchewan-based design builder with a strong track record right here in Regina. Since 2021, we've delivered over 130 affordable rental units in the city's northwest, and we were the builder of the Horse Dance Lodge, which was recognized as the 2023 Green Build of the Year by the Regina and Region Home Builders Association. These projects not only demonstrate our technical expertise, but also our commitment to delivering housing that is sustainable, community-focused, and responsive to local needs. At 1840 Lorne, our role is to bring Namarind's vision into reality. This proposal is realistic, shovel-ready, and financially viable in today's climate. It has been carefully designed as a residential-focused project to ensure it can proceed without delay, while still providing the kind of high-quality and energy-efficient homes that downtown Regina needs. The design itself emphasizes street-oriented townhomes that strengthen safety and walkability, while reflecting indigenous-inspired architecture. Inside, the housing mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units ensures that young families, professionals, and others who want to live downtown will have the options that truly meet their needs. From a delivery perspective, this project is ready to move. The construction method we use is quicker, cleaner, and greener, which means families can move in sooner with less disruption to the neighborhood, and with long-term benefits in affordability and energy performance. In short, Namarind has provided the vision and the leadership. Big Block is here to make sure the project gets built, bringing new families, new vitality, and new confidence to Regina's downtown. Thank you again for your time and for your leadership in supporting practical, high-impact housing solutions.
Perfect. Thank you for your presentation. And with that, I'll open up to my colleagues for questions. Counselor Burton, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair, thank you for your presentation. Something that's not really clear is, are these units for rental or for purchase?
Rental.
Rental. Okay, may I ask, through the chair, what happened to the original 177-unit planned development?
Didn't work. Times changed.
Could, through the chair, could you expand?
Well, it just didn't work. I'm not sure what else I can say. We couldn't put the funding together, it was too big of a project. And that was over 10 years ago.
Okay. So in speaking with, you know, experts in Regina, in terms of, you know, expertise in commercial and construction viability, through the years that we've been working with Namarind, we found that it's just not financially viable to construct the kind of development that Namarind had originally envisioned for this space. And so we worked closely with funding partners and real estate experts to determine, you know, what actually would be possible, and that is what you're looking at today in terms of the proposal we are putting forward, something that actually is financially viable for the current economic climate and for downtown Regina right now.
So through the chair, some of the other organizations downtown have kind of indicated this is not really fit with the character of that area of downtown, that townhouses in the midst of the commercial buildings downtown is a bit more difficult. How would you respond to those statements from other downtown organizations that it doesn't really fit with the character?
I think the proposal is a vast improvement over a parking lot. And what I would say is that our proposal brings in, you know, nearly 100, over 150 families or individuals into that area, and around 800,000 in discretionary income, you know, just based on the average income of Regina residents. And so that will support future business investment in the area, which is something that Regina desperately wants and needs. And we do have a housing crisis happening in our cities right now. And so this proposal, you know, while it's not what was originally envisioned, it does meet multiple needs in terms of bringing not just homes downtown, but also customers for businesses. And I think what we've done is we've listened to the concerns of some of the folks through the discretionary use application process, where it was indicated that the proposal, original proposal, was a bit too suburban in style. And so we made some, you know, big design changes to make it a more urban townhome design. So we've elevated the buildings off of the street face, and each unit has like a stairwell onto a small patio in the front, so... And we've used durable materials, we've proposed durable materials for the interface of the public realm, as well as proposed some public realm improvements in terms of a small park on the corner of 11th and Lorne. So I actually think this proposal does enhance the fabric of the area.
So what are the factors with construction design is SEPTED? Excuse me for that, the design, crime prevention through environmental design. Did you submit your design for any kind of analysis in regards to that? Because as I look at the plans, there's lots of walkways, steps for people to sit or loiter on, places for people, nooks and crannies, hidden locations, back walkways or stuff like that in itself concern. Is this going to be someplace that now the residents are complaining about people that are trying to live the lifestyle that you want to see, bring downtown? But have you submitted through any SEPTED analysis?
I'm not sure if, is that included as part of the permit review process?
No.
With the city? Certainly, at any rate, the concern is understood and noted, and I know that Namarind doesn't want to build something that's not going to serve the residents who live there well. And we also did do a lot of work in terms of designing in such a way where, you know, crime or loitering would be limited. And so there's a lot of lighting in the site, and there will be sort of natural barriers to prevent people from circulating through the interior of the site. And I would also say that when you design a building for downtown that has like a monolithic facade, like what was originally proposed, that does tend to depersonalize the area, and so you do tend to see more of that kind of activity. These are people's homes, these are the front of their homes, so they're not going to tolerate people loitering, you know. Police will be called, and those people will be asked to move along. And so we actually see this proposal being an enhancement to safety for that area specifically. Businesses will appreciate the fact that there's visibility in that area 24/7/365 versus, you know, typically what you see downtown is they empty out in the evenings and weekends. And so you do create a lot of opportunity for, you know, the kind of activity and behavior that we would prefer not to see in our downtown. So I think that this will actually enhance the safety of that area instead of being a concern for safety.
Could you describe some of the barriers that could not see in any of the design that was submitted? And maybe it's just the detail too much, but it seemed like there was a lot of back walkways not visible from the street, and they could walk right through and not be seen by anybody.
Yeah, so the site will be well-lit, so there won't be anywhere where people can hide. I know we haven't really discussed it, but I'm certain that Namarind will want security cameras, and the design will include fencing and shrubbery to prevent the specific kinds of circulation that we'd like to avoid in that area.
Through the chair, like, none was described in what I read through there about any fencing, it was just shown as a walkway. There's in the elevation diagrams, there's nothing, not a thing.
Okay.
And that seems, and then you're saying cameras now, and I kind of didn't see anything about that. And these are things that would probably show up through that, so I'm just concerned about that.
So we're at this discretionary use phase, so not everything is finalized at this stage. So those are, as I've said, those are parts of the plan for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to touch base about some of the concerns noted in the feedback. And I think, like, you spoke to some of those already, but in relation to the concerns that it's not high enough density, lack of street-level shopping, elimination of surface parking, that folks wanted to see that. Is the response to all of those essentially what you already said, which is those just aren't feasible anymore? Or is there further that you would elaborate in relation to those concerns?
Yeah, it's what we've said, Counselor.
Sorry?
I think we've already answered, thank you so much.
And then I think this concern is maybe specifically for Namarind. There was also a concern noted in that feedback that said this is not a suitable location for affordable housing. And so as the housing experts, I just was wondering if you could respond to that concern? Like, just your thoughts on that concern?
I guess my thoughts are why. It is a mixed-use development, so not every unit is affordable.
Okay.
And it's a confusing question to me, actually. Like, where is the right place, then, if it's not there?
Okay. Now, next question would be, so if this gets denied, what would your next steps be?
I don't have a Plan B. I have a plan of developing this spot for housing.
Okay.
We want to play an active role in the revitalization of our downtown. That's bringing people downtown, that's being available for small businesses. We want it to be a walkable street and to participate. I just think like it's by the park, it's by the library, it's by buses, it's... To me, it's everything.
Okay.
And I would say, just maybe to add to that, if I may...
Sorry?
If I may add?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. You know, we had some members of the commission say, you know, it's not the original kind of dense, mixed-use development that was originally proposed 10 years ago. And I would say, unfortunately, a denial here does not pave the way for that kind of development to happen. And, you know, even before Namarind and Big Block started working together, I know Namarind was working quite heavily on that proposal. And we actually iterated a scaled-down mixed-use development with commercial on the main floor as part of our early work with Namarind, and we're basically challenged by the changing funding landscape, which started to look at commercial development differently. It required a higher debt coverage ratio.
Sorry, a higher what?
Debt coverage ratio, which is basically they want to see higher incomes for the investment that they're making. And the way that the ratio was just harder to achieve than on a residential development. And then we also spoke with real estate experts familiar with the Regina downtown market. And it's unfortunate, but the kind of landscape right now is that you can't construct new office space downtown of this style and hope to make your investment back off of it at any point in the near future. Obviously, economic landscape changes, and maybe in the further future, that might be possible. But at this time, it is not. And that's why you're not seeing a lot of those kinds of developments happening right now.
Okay. And so, and if this gets approved, then are you ready to move forward fairly quickly? Like, what does that timeline look like?
Yeah, so our expectation would be that we'd be able to start either in the fall or in the spring for this project, so.
Okay. And have you folks engaged with the Regina Downtown Business Improvement District in relation to this project? Or any of the other downtown stakeholders?
Just the Regina Downtown bid.
Okay. And I guess they had noted some concerns. Did you make any changes to the project based on any of the concerns that came up through that engagement?
Well, we've made 11th Avenue retail-ready or future-ready. So they have the... When there is the need, I would say, for a small business, then it's... There won't be shoppers moving in, but there'll be some smaller boutique businesses that'll be able to move in.
On 11th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And...
We did move the amenity building to the corner of 11th and Lorne as well.
Okay. I think last question. You were speaking in relation to Big Block's experience with environmental sustainability. Is that incorporated into this project or not as much?
It is, as part of the requirements of the funding that we are pursuing. We're now, sorry, I might mess this up a little bit because CMHC's criteria has recently changed. They used to conceptualize energy efficiency in terms of percentage of efficiency above code, and they've gone to the new step code, which is a bit of an enigma to me right now. But we're somewhere in the range of 40% more efficient than a similar code-built house. And that's just, you know, partly... And that's just, you know, partly, it's in our DNA to be able to construct.
It's, sorry?
It's in our DNA to construct homes that are very efficient, but also a reality of the funding requirements.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Radins, go ahead.
Hey, thank you for being here. I'm happy to see this on, on the table, so I just do have a few questions. When, when will groundbreaking be happening?
Yeah, we anticipate either the fall or in the spring.
Okay. And so when do we anticipate completion?
So we have projected that construction will take about 14 months.
Okay. And so I see in terms of your parking here, you have 24 stalls, you have 48 units, so where, where are the rest of people supposed to park that are living there?
Yeah, so these are downtown urban-oriented, transit-oriented kind of development, so I guess there's a few factors. That is one factor. The other factor is that some of these units will be for, some of these units are designated affordable units. And so in my experience, when you have units for affordable housing, the parking requirements are generally less than one, they're even sometimes less than half a parking stall per unit. In fact, I think at the Horace Dance Lodge, which we built, we were required to provide 33 parking stalls, and it's a 29-unit building. And I think every time I've been there, there's been no more than six cars in the parking lot, and those cars belong to staff. So we're not talking about the same kind of facility. It's somewhere in the middle between a market where each, you know, each unit is going to require its own parking spot and highly affordable, where they may need very little. So it's somewhere in the middle. So I think combined with the fact that this is on the corner and you've got parking on all kind of both sides of that parcel, street parking, that we think that the amount of parking is sufficient for this development.
Okay, so street parking, would that be paid parking or?
I believe it is. Yeah, I believe it is, yeah.
It's paid parking?
Yeah, I believe that area is paid parking.
Okay, so the...
During the day, anyway.
Sorry?
During the day, yeah.
Okay. So I appreciate Counselor Burton's questions around safety concerns, though I'd like to add to that is that the AROs are downtown and, and, you know, supporting that area. And so, and if you're putting in cameras and things like that, that's a, that's a plus, and that helps us support that work as well. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Flores, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, first of all, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for all the work that has gone into this project. You elaborated a little bit about kind of your vision for this project, but can you tell us a bit more about what is the vision for this project in the future and how you see it contributing to the revitalization of Regina's downtown?
Well, I go back to really just traveling to other cities, and I would say that's where our idea has grown to, is when you're walking in some of these downtowns and there was these two old guys sitting on the step having a coffee and a cigarette and laughing and really enjoying the morning. And when I got to the, the next stairwell, it was a women's boutique clothing store. Then there was a coffee shop, then there was a couple more of residential. We thought we could make that work. So when we talked with Regina downtown bid, and they're interested in having it ready for commercial space, we talked about that, and that's the same presentation and the things we talked about with the planning commission, about how we see that working. Because I think our goal, when I, when I think of revitalization downtown and bringing people downtown, it's going for a walk and, you know, you're going to the park, or you're grabbing a coffee and just walking down the street and going to another store. It's, I've seen it in many cities, and I, I would love for that to be the way it turns out here.
Fantastic, thank you so much. I look forward to seeing that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Matsonelli, go ahead.
Thank you. Good day through the chair. Seen all the iterations of this, it's been a long road. Forty-four apartments, it's primarily centered towards family. What's going to be the nearby schools, and what method are the children going to be getting to school, and how does that lay out in the future? Through the chair.
Well, they'll have to be bused, they're given a ride with their, by their parents, just like my grandchildren, same thing. I don't think it matters so much where you live.
Through the chair, has there been any review of the fairly recent school board policies about their busing and what goes on, or any attention paid to that before this, if it's family-oriented?
No, we haven't. I just imagine them going to Kinnock, actually.
The original plan was a lot more density, so more people to draw more chance of having an effect to overcome problems like that through use. This is a little bit different. The retail-ready aspect, when that was reviewed with the downtown bid, was that this plan as retail-ready, and were they embracing that idea, or the original plan of having retail in this area, were they embracing?
I'm really having trouble hearing you, sorry.
Sorry about that, let me get closer to the mic. You mentioned the downtown bid in your presentation?
Yes.
The retail-ready is something that they thought of, but their actual desire was for actual retail use. Is, is there a little bit of a hinge point there or not? Through the chair.
There may be for them.
Okay.
You know, when I think of an investment in developing retail, and right now, I'm not sure, but I think the retail rates are around $10 a square foot for rent, and I don't think that we could build any retail space specific to that. Like, and I'm not sure if they're even, they may have gotten into square footages, but I don't know how that could make for a viable development right now. Ten years ago, when we first looked at it, we saw that as a way to subsidize rents. That's not the case now, that's not the, the environment that we live in.
Appreciate that. And looking at the site plan through the chair, half a block is used for the proposed development, the remaining half a block remains surface parking parcel, is that correct?
No, it would be, I suppose when you look at the, it might look like it's 25%. I don't think it's quite, but...
Yeah, there's a bit of an interesting, interesting thing going on with the, there are two separate parcels, and one of them is subject to the council's 10-year, 12-year policy around kind of a moratorium on surface parking, I guess you could call it. And the other is not, but we are looking to redevelop the entire site. And so that the two, the entire kind of existing surface parking site would be redeveloped. And there would be some surface parking retained for the residents there.
Okay. And the parcel used for the surface parking in the end, would that be the land that was the moratorium granted or parking work? We managed to get housing, but we still have parking, I guess, I just want to understand.
Yeah, so I think how it works is the, the bylaw restricts surface parking as a kind of standalone use, but if it's included as part of a residential development, that kicks it into a different consideration.
And so is that what you're using for the parking of this?
Yeah.
Or is there still going to be a paid lot maintained on this block besides the parking for the units?
Yeah, so this is now, these parking stalls are going to be for the residents of the building and not for the pub, the public use.
Oh, so there's no more paid public lot on this block after this is finished?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Trinble, go ahead.
Oh, thank you for your, your proposal and what you're doing here. We talked a lot about parking, and I'm looking at some of the details here. Is there like a place for bike parking?
I don't think it's specifically shown in the drawing, but I know that it is a requirement of the bylaw. So once we get through discretionary use and we actually go to getting our building permit, the city of Regina will require us to have either a dedic, it'll, it'll be a dedicated bike parking area, and it may even be required to be covered. I can't remember the exact bylaw. But of course, we're not asking for a reduction of that requirement here. This is more about land use, and so when we get to the building permit stage, we'll, we intend to put as much bike parking as is required, and perhaps even more depending on the conversations we have with Namarind.
Yeah, I, I would think it looks like your target might be more cyclists.
Right, yeah, cyclists, transit takers, and, and people who can potentially walk to work.
Exactly.
And enjoy a, I guess, a more urban lifestyle.
I'm just looking at the elevations here, and I can see kind of the callback to the architecture around it and your indigenous stuff. Would you like to talk a little bit about how you have pulled from the other buildings around it to make it more situated with our downtown?
Absolutely. So I think the design that we've proposed is a beautiful marriage of kind of the existing downtown development facades, which are primarily brick in this area, and, and then incorporating some indigenous elements. And so we've worked closely with David T. Forten, architect, who is actually the architect who we worked with on the Horace Dance Lodge design. And he pulled from, you know, indigenous patterns and symbols. If you recall the original proposals, there was a sawtooth roof, which we eliminated in this iteration of the design for practical reasons, but that was sort of meant to, you know, be a visual, pay a visual respect to the teepee. And so we've tried to retain some element of that sawtooth design in the, in the different patterns of brick and, and how the brick will interact on the facade in the design that we have now. So yeah, I think it's, it's a, a way to combine kind of the original or existing brick with an indigenous design, and I think we're, I think we're really proud of what we've accomplished here and how it looks.
No, you, you should be. I can see the callbacks with the angular and the colors, particularly the elevation AA with the cure next to it. Also, the, the ramp, I wanted to say appreciation for the ramp for mobility devices and bikes and showing your thoughtfulness.
Right.
And I can also see all the little light circles, so thank you.
May I speak more to accessibility?
Yes, please.
As well, because that was a big part of the design as well. And so the interior of the site will actually be elevated in such a way where all the site entrances that face the interior will be at-grade. So anyone who is in a wheelchair, who has limited mobility, will, will be very at-home and comfortable in those units. We did add the ramp on the exterior, and that's for that sort of commercial-ready unit on, on that edge there. That's the kind of amenity space that the tenants will enjoy and, you know, that Namarind will use for gatherings and events and that kind of thing, so. And then I, I believe we're achieving 20% accessible units in this development. Again, a requirement of the funding program that we're pursuing, which well exceeds the municipal requirement, and actually, the kind of accessible units that we're putting in here include additional features that you wouldn't find in a typical accessible unit. So full roll under countertops and in the kitchens and bathrooms and full wheelchair turning radius, not just in the bathrooms, but also in every room of the, of the unit. So they'll be very conducive to people with limited mobility.
That's very much appreciated. Thank you so much for adding that additional context. You really used every space, space planned and the details, and it's evident here, so thank you for your hard work, and I can see that.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bezo, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, a couple points that kind of tweaked my interest. You said CMHC is involved, so we'll understand their program. Walk me through the financing of this building. Right now, we're looking at a $22 million build, 48 units, that works out to about $458,000 per unit. Amortize over a 50-year timeframe with the CMHC at 3.5%. You're looking at about a $1,600 a month with maintenance, with taxes, everything else. You're looking at a rental suite of roughly $2,300 a month. Walk me through the rest of the finances on how is this affordable when your taxation and your all-in costs are going to be excessive of $2,300 a month?
Part of that 22 million is the $10 million that we've already invested. When we bought the land over 10 years ago, we paid a premium, then we knocked down a building. So right there was about $8 million. Then we've invested other money in studies and architects, so that pushed us up near the $10 million. So it's just slightly, I think it's like $14.8 million is what's left to spend now.
So the bill is 14 million?
Yeah, 22 included the land purchase, which happened over 10 years.
Yeah, so that's already capitalized, and that's done.
Yes.
So what is your?
So there's some, if I may add, there is, so CMHC offers grants as part of, so the reason why we've been talking about, you know, 20% accessible and 30% higher-than-energy efficiency is because the CMHC Affordable Housing Fund works on a point system. You have a better chance of success if you increase those metrics. And affordability is one of them as well. So we've kind of looked for a sweet spot in terms of number of units and affordability levels. You can target, you know, 80% below MMR, or let's say 80% of MMR, 70% of MMR, which is median market rent for that area. And the more affordable you are, the more points you get, so. And that also dictates what grant you get. So it's not a straight loan, there are grants included as part of the funding. And then we would also be pursuing some of the city's own programs through affordable, through the housing incentives program, and through the Housing Accelerator Fund, and then there's provincial dollars available as well, grant dollars as well. So it's not a straight loan. There are some grants that are available to an organization like Namarind, providing affordable housing for a city, for the city.
So with that, walk me through what the cost to rent this completed suite is going to be?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, no.
They're affordable.
And then on the taxation front, have you talked to the city what the taxation front's going to look like on this? Right now, if you compare this suite to the brownstone, which is just, I'm going to say a few blocks south, which is kind of a newer build, you're looking at about, you know, about a $5,000 a year per suite taxation bill.
Yeah, so we...
Have you accounted for that?
We do, yeah. The CMHC requires you to estimate, and I believe we've had conversations, they're, they probably took place some time ago, which is why I'm struggling to remember. But we did have conversations on this proposal, or we either, or we estimated based on a similar development. But we are required to consider the tax, the property tax burden on this development as part of the pro forma for the project.
Yeah. So you don't have what you need to rent these suites for?
I, I, we do, it's, I, maybe I should have brought the pro forma, because I guess we were, we were anticipating to talk about land use today and not financial viability. CMHC has already determined our project is financially viable, based on the rents and the cost of the debt that Namarind would be taking on. So my apologies for not being better prepared for you. I, I, one bedroom was somewhere around 800 for affordable, just under 1,000 for market, and then we were up to 1,200 or 1,300 for affordable three-bedroom, and then somewhere around 1,800 for a market three-bedroom. And we have some two-bedrooms in there as well, so I'm, I, those are not the exact numbers, my apologies. They're close.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for your presentation today, and you can return to the gallery.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have communications on item CR 25-104. Can I have a motion to receive and file the following communications? CP 25-137, Terry Keine, Harvard Developments. CP 25-138, Stu Niebergol, Regina Home Builders Association. CP 25-140, Tim Otiduj, Saskatchewan Realtors Association. And CP 25-143, Judith Verisec, RD bid. Counselor Zikiniak, thank you, and seconder? Sorry, I was looking up. Counselor Rassvich, thank you. I don't see any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider item CR 25-104 discretionary use, 1840 Lorne Street, 2301 11th Avenue, and I will ask Counselor Siklis to please introduce the report. Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, your worship. As Chair of the Regina Planning Commission, we saw this come to us. We asked all the same questions that you just did, and we passed, we passed it with a majority. You've seen the notes and you've seen, and you've heard... heard what our delegates have said. They said the same things then as they're saying now. I don't know what more I can offer at this point until we start talking to administration. But the commission is behind the project.
Thank you, Counselor. Can I have someone move the report? Counselor Fro, I saw you throw your hand up first over there. Okay, and a secondar? Counselor Flores. Counselor Fro, would you like to speak to the report?
Yeah, thank you. Just very briefly through the chair. First, thanks for your presentation today. As the downtown counselor, I'm regularly asked about our plans for the downtown and our plans towards fostering density. So I see good alignment with our downtown plan and our housing goals. And it's a good medium-density plan. We need an injection of confidence and capital in our downtown, and this does both. So thank you. I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor Fro. I'm going to say my piece and then I'll go to everybody else for their commentary. So we know there's a need for affordable housing and housing in general. We want more people downtown, especially after 5:00 PM. We want less parking, surface parking lots and more development downtown. And the talk around 11th Avenue and the revitalization of downtown and this being retail-ready as described, I feel it hits a lot of important marks for our downtown. So I'll say perfection is the enemy of progress, and denying one development does not magically create another. So with that, I will go to my colleagues for any other further commentary or questions. And I'll go to Counselor Mattsonelli. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've talked about this property a few times over my tenure, and I have to admit, it's always been about a surface parcel. So I'm kind of happy it's not about that anymore. But I have a lot of trepidation about the proposal. Originally, it was supposed to be a lot higher density than it is right now. Thinking of the assets that a family needs and trying to get to that point of being large enough to attract others to come provide services, doesn't really meet the merit with only 48 units. There's going to be no size of population to be drawing for new offerings to come to meet only 48 units, I believe. Originally, it was a lot larger. With the expansion and the fix of 11th Avenue, we've invested for high-density pipes and infrastructure to support high-density in the downtown as the vision. And although this does add density, it's, it's, it's more of a suburban neighborhood density. We have a lot of underused land throughout the city. This fits on much of it. In our downtown, we've lacked proper investment in building to activate the tax base for over a decade. Looking at some of the large real estate investments we have in the downtown, and I kind of wonder what this does to activate their tax base to great, bring in a greater tax grab for the residents of Regina to alleviate their residential taxes. I can't see how this would affect a 10-story building to bring up a, a tax lift on its taxes for investor purposes. I note in the summary by administration, it kind of feels the same way I do. It, it does fulfill the outcomes of development in the downtown, but maybe not in the true spirit of it, with the size of density and everything else. The pipes in the ground were replaced and right now are 100 years old. I would love to work with a great organization like NAMRAN to find a good fit for a, a density proposition like this. I know we have a lot of underused, underutilized land throughout the city. But with the investment put out, I don't think this is the turnaround that we need. And thinking of what we went through or what I stepped into at the tail end of Victoria Avenue and Albert Street and the hole that I had to agree to fund to fill in, not that I think this would pass in its completion, just trying to grab at every opportunity doesn't really always pay back. And I have a little bit of a feeling with that, with this one. Through the chair, I guess for anyone on, on the planning commission, the idea of the tax lift and the necessity to activate that in the downtown, was that part of the discussions at all? Was that something that's familiar with planning commission or something that's thought of in these decisions through the chair?
Does someone want to speak to that from planning commission? Counselor Siklis, is that something you'd want to?
Thanks for the question, Jason. Through you, Chair. I think it was a quarter million?
Right, two?
We talked about the dollar amount of tax. Yeah. I don't remember the number.
Okay, okay. Yeah, there again, what about the amenities the residents would need in a downtown that's not well-populated? And the change in that downtown without there being a large population being added, was that part of the discussion as well? Were those points taken into consideration?
Yes.
Was there any ideas of how that was going to be overcome, brought up in the meeting through the chair?
Yeah, and kind of answers, those kinds of answers are in my little spiel that I'll throw out there in a minute. But, you know, downtown is, is being rejuvenated right now. I mean, the front-end street that they're going to be on is completely torn up, as you mentioned.
Yeah.
And the development itself has the ability to switch main floor to full-on retail because they've developed 10-foot ceilings in there. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. So it's retail-ready, unlike when we talk about roof-ready at Moser. This is really retail-ready, okay? So that could work.
Okay. Thanks a lot. And here again, I have a lot of respect for NAMRAN. I don't mean to be a little bit of a stick in the mud on this, but just through all the conversations and all the work put into the downtown, I feel like looking for the Goldilocks zone to get something out of the ground brings a good enough attitude sometimes. And with a 100-year investment, I'd, I'd rather say that we got to nail this. So I'm on the fence pretty hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it is just before 2:30. We're going to take our mandatory 15-minute break and we'll be back at 2:42.
Okay, I'll ask members to find their seats so we can get started, please. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Okay. Okay, next I have Councilor Radens.
I made it, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to thank everyone for their input and without echoing, I'm gonna also echo Councilor Flores and Mayor's comments regarding that I feel like this is a start for us. And we say we all, we need housing, we need densification, and I think that this proposal, I see this as a win-win for our city. The downtown densification revitalization and it's a start, it's a start and a change of culture and downtown. In the future, what I'm looking forward to seeing, and I've traveled a lot across the country and everywhere I go in a downtown, I see cranes. I want to see cranes in downtown Regina. And so I think this meets our housing needs as a start for sure and I just want us to go ahead. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Radens. Councilor Burton, go ahead.
I guess my first question is to the administration, just that there was the feedbacks from the 75 meter, whatever radius that they have here for them. Twenty-six of the 28 were either opposed or would accept if different, and I was wondering if you could help identify the demographics of those people? Are they residents, are they business owners? Who made up the people that responded to the survey that were generally negative to the development?
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair, thank you for that question, and I would say that the respondents would be a mix between business owners and residents within the area. And there, I just want to point out that those, that request for feedback is in relation to the proposal as it's submitted. And so since that proposal was submitted, there was a lot of work between administration and Namarind and Big Block in order to incorporate some changes into the actual proposal so that it better aligned with some of the feedback we heard from community.
Thank you. I guess to the administration, I struggled with finding my acronyms there, that there is, did not seem to be any SEP TED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Analysis for that. And I was just wondering if there might be any observations that the administration might bring to bear on the fact that there are many walkways, nooks, crannies, and hidden spaces, or stair steps that are inviting for people to sit on regardless of how many homeowners chase them away? And what if things might happen in that scenario?
Thank you for that question through the chair. So we, we don't necessarily put these development applications through a SEP TED process, I would add, and then I'll defer to Ms. Dawson, but I would add that there are many of our buildings in the downtown that have nooks and crannies and stairwells and spaces in between buildings and such. And in those cases, and I expect in this case, that the property owner would be seeking to keep the property secure and help residents maintain a secure and safe residential location. Ms. Dawson, do you have anything further to add?
Yeah, I'll just add that we would agree with the proponent when they said having residents downtown provides more eyes on the street. Certainly more people available to monitor what's going on. But we would also provide that through the more detailed design, we would ensure that there's proper lighting and we would be looking at sightlines, access restrictions, and those types of things to ensure that our needs are addressed as well. And should mention that because downtown is a mix of commercial and residential, yeah, we do get that on other properties as well.
Thank you. I guess, you know, I'm looking at the feedback, there's some organizations that are supporting, there's some other organizations that have some concerns, and I do agree with those concerns. And I just want to discuss here that, you know, what's happened here is that basically there was some land sitting and the meter ran out. And now something's had to happen here. And I point out that we council are the meter, that we have the right to reset that meter. And right now I believe we do have a non-optimal solution and that there's potential problems that are going to be occurring here. I don't believe that we are choosing necessarily the right design for the right location. We need to have the high density and the proper high-density location, the medium-density and the proper medium-density location, and the low-density and the proper low-density location. It's not located any close to any grocery stores or drugstores. Are they gonna drive, bike, or walk when it's minus 30? In the end here, I feel that we're rushing to put something in, and I asked the question, do we want it done fast or do we want it run right, done right? Let's reset the meter, and I don't believe that this is something that we should proceeding with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Flores, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. Like this project has been on for a while and right now stands as a parking lot, and I think as it has been mentioned by a few councilors, we have an option that provides housing in this area. Of course, I think we can all agree in an ideal scenario we'd have higher density, but that's not the case. And I think the delegates have been very clear that denying this project is not gonna magically make this into a higher-density option. Rather, it's just gonna keep it as a parking lot, which I don't think is the best option for that area. Just looking at the report and what the delegates have shared with us, a lot of work has gone into bringing this to life. And I, to me, we can wait to see if we get a higher-density option for many more years and that would likely increase the cost and the viability of a project like that. Or we can accept the fact that this is, this is not low-density either. I think this does provide a good number of housing there in that area. And I think this does bring residents to the downtown that can allow us to continue bringing that vibrancy, that can allow us to have more residents that can hopefully incentivize things like grocery stores downtown because there are more people and incentivize more business and more vibrancy there. So to me, I think this is a project worth pursuing and I really appreciate all the work that has gone into this and the time that the Namarind and everybody else involved has put into this. So I will be supporting this and I urge all of us to think about what other options that we have and the timeline that it would take to achieve that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Siquez.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Sales pitch coming, just warning you. It did go through my committee, so obviously I'm in favor, but just thought I'd put a few points out there that might help some of the fence sitters, well, only one. And maybe allay some of Mark's concerns. As we consider the project, I just want to emphasize why I think this little project is a pivotal moment for our downtown and our city's future. It's not just about a single building, it's about signaling that Regina is open for business, ready for growth, and committed to a vibrant, sustainable urban core. I have a few points I'd like to outline as to why this project deserves our enthusiastic support. Number one, breaking the stagnation. For over a decade, downtown Regina has seen no new residential developments. Empty lots don't inspire confidence or growth. Namarind's bold proposal changes that. The developer's taking a calculated risk to invest in our city, and we must champion this initiative. Approving this project sends a clear message to other developers, businesses, and to our residents that Regina is not just open for business, we're ready to thrive. Number two, it's a visible sign of progress. Councilor Radens hit the nail on the head there. We've all heard our residents ask, where are the cranes? A call for tangible signs of growth. Namarind answers that call. This innovative modular project will be craned into place, minimizing traffic disruptions and accelerating construction timelines. It's a smart, efficient approach that showcases Regina as a forward-thinking city. Let's celebrate this visible step towards a revitalized downtown. Number three, sustainability at the core. This project aligns with our commitment to sustainability. Its modular design significantly reduces greenhouse gas emissions during construction compared to traditional methods. This is a win for our environment and a model for future developments. Shannon, I know you'll appreciate this green approach, and hugs may be in order. Number four, designed for the future. Some residents have raised valid questions about incorporating street-level retail. Just as we've heard calls for a roof on Mosaic Stadium, Namarind has planned ahead. With 10-foot ceilings on the main floor, this building is retail-ready, as we've heard, poised to adapt when downtown's retail demand grows. Just like our roof-ready stadium, this project balances today's realities with tomorrow's potential. Number five, pragmatism over perfection. As the saying goes, perfect is the enemy of good. Waiting for a flawless project risks stalling progress. Namarind is a well-designed, practical development that meets our city's needs today while laying the groundwork for future growth. Let's not let idealized visions delay tangible improvements. Number six, stronger Regina. Every one of us wants to leave Regina better than we found it. Transforming an empty lot into a multifamily residence for approximately 48 families or up to about 150 new residents does exactly that. These new downtowners will bring energy, diversity, and vitality to the core, supporting local businesses and strengthening our community. And number seven, a signal to the world. Yes, the world. This project is more than a building, it's a statement. It tells companies, educators, innovators, and governments that downtown Regina is not just a place to work, it's a place to live, connect, and thrive. By supporting Namarind, we're investing in a vibrant urban future and setting the stage for more developments to follow. I urge you, as my final recommendation, to unanimously support the Namarind development. Let's address any concerns through collaboration with the developer and admin to ensure that this project meets our shared goals. Approving this proposal is a step towards a stronger, more vibrant Regina, one that we can be proud of. This is the way forward. Thank you, and I look forward to your support.
Thank you, Councilor Siquez. I'm sure our worldwide viewers will appreciate their call of today. Councilor Turnbull, go ahead.
I get to follow that? Okay, I didn't get any hugs for accessibility though. Okay. I do have some questions to the chair, to the administration. Do we usually ask developers for SEP Teds or rental rates? Is that something we usually ask?
Ms. Bryden.
Thank you, through the chair. So the report before you is really related to discretionary use and zoning. And so those further conversations that Ms. Dawson referred to would come when we're looking at building at the actual development permit stage.
Okay, so are we usually that involved with private businesses?
And through the chair, if I may also add, we don't look at the financials for the development. That is up to the developer to determine whether or not their project is financially viable.
Yeah, so that's not really our concern overly, that's a risk a private business would take on, and that's not really our lane?
Thank you, through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And I guess when we're looking at something like this, what is our role? Are we the developer, are we letting private business develop it, and like, how involved do we get in these details?
Through the chair, again, this is land owned by Namarind, it is their development. We are here to talk about land use, and then when they actually make their application for the development, we would work through the regulations in terms of the building code, et cetera, but that is, that is our role.
So our concern would be more about how it affects our downtown, tax rates, vibrancy, and our strategic plan. It would be less about their return on investment.
Thank you, through the chair, that's absolutely correct.
Yeah, so our lane is to how it looks in our bigger picture as a city, not how their business runs per se.
Thank you, yes, that is correct. And as I said earlier, there is a lot of work between the team and Namarind in order to help meet those downtown design requirements. And actually, if I may, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Mario and Mr. Fenton for all the work that they did do to bring this project along.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna say ditto to a lot of the things that people have said around here. I do believe this is a great project. I don't know how many points George said, but I agree with most or all of them, I don't even know. So denying this project, I guess another question I would have to administration is what would happen if we denied this project? Do we get to determine what goes in its place?
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. If this project is denied, then Namarind would be, you know, in a position where they could determine whether they would leave the property vacant for several more years until another opportunity that they sees fit comes forward.
So would it be fair to say if we denied this project, we don't get to say what goes there, it's still their property?
Through the chair, in as much as the zoning bylaw and all the regulations require, yes, we, that's correct.
Yeah, so that, so our role is just to approve this or not, not to determine what goes on other people, like on privately-owned property.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, just, okay, and so I would say that I believe this is a good project. I believe it will bring a lot to our community. I see the attention to design detail and things. We, we sit here and we want affordability, housing, we want a vibrant downtown. we, we sit here and we want affordability housing, we want a vibrant downtown, and this meets most, like, these goals, and I really appreciate the work you've done on this, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you. So I don't see any further questions? I'm gonna pause. Okay, so with that, I will go to Counselor Fro to close debate. Counselor Fro, to you.
Nothing further, Chad.
Okay, thank you, and with that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Chair, the motion is carried in a vote of 10 to 1, with the following members voting in favor as follows. Counselor Fro, Siklis, Bezo, Manzelli, Turnbull, Raddins, Zakidniak, Flores, and Ras, Rasovich, and Mayor Bishinsky. The member voting against is Counselor Burton.
Okay, thank you. So we will now consider the public hearing and public notice bylaw related to the previous items, CR 25-104 discretionary use, 1840 Lawrence Street, and 2301 11th Avenue, and I will ask Deputy Mayor Rasovich to do first reading of bylaw number 2025-56, the Regina zoning amendment bylaw, 2025 number 15.
I move seconded by Counselor Bezo that bylaw number 2025-56 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mayor, the first reading of the bylaw is carried in a vote of 10 to 1, with the following members voting in favor as follows. Counselor Fro, Siklis, Bezo, Manzelli, Turnbull, Raddins, Zakidniak, Flores, Rasovich, and Mayor Bishinsky, and the member voting against is Counselor Burton.
Thank you, and I will call upon the clerk to speak to the public hearing portion of the bylaw.
Through you, Chair, as required by legislation, the following bylaw requires a public hearing. Bylaw number 2025-56, the Regina zoning amendment bylaw, 2025 number 15. The purpose of this bylaw is to rezone the subject property from C contract zone to D C D D, downtown direct control district zone, and update regulations related to the dwelling land use class within the D C D D downtown direct control district zone. Is there anyone in the gallery today that wishes to address City Council on this proposed bylaw? There appears to be no one, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rasovich, can you please do second reading of the bylaw?
I move, I move seconded by Counselor Siklis that bylaw number 2025-56 be read a second time at this meeting.
Okay, with that, does any member of council have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mayor, the second reading of the bylaw is carried in a vote result of 10 to 1, following voting in favor as follows. Counselor Fro, Siklis, Bezo, Manzelli, Turnbull, Raddins, Zakidniak, Flores, Rasovich, and Mayor Bishinsky, and Counselor Burton voting against.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Rasovich, can you please do consent for a third reading of the bylaw?
I move seconded by Counselor Fro that bylaw number 2025-56 go to a third reading at this meeting.
Thank you, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mayor, the consent for third reading of the bylaw is carried unanimously as required by law.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rasovich, can I get you to please do final reading of the bylaw?
I move seconded by Counselor Burton that bylaw number 2025-56 be read a third time.
Could you read it, just to have Counselor Fro as the seconder?
Oh, right, okay, I move seconded by Counselor Fro that bylaw number 2025-56 go to the third reading at this meeting?
Okay, with, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on the third reading of the bylaw.
Through you, Mayor, a third reading of the bylaw is carried in a vote result of 10 to 1, with the following voting in favor as follows. Counselors Fro, Siklis, Bezo, Manzelli, Turnbull, Raddins, Zakidniak, Flores, Rasovich, and Mayor Bishinsky, and the member voting against is Counselor Burton.
Okay, we will now consider item CR 25-105, 2024, Report on Forced Labor and Child Labor in Supply Chains. Can I have someone move concurrence with the, with addition of the following? Delegate authority to the acting city manager to sign the attestation contained in Appendix Counselor Manzelli, thank you, and a seconder, Counselor Fro. Any questions on the report? This was one, just as a reminder, that was removed, just to have this portion added, it was on the consent agenda. Okay, Counselor Manzelli is the mover, any final words? Okay, he's good, then we're good, so I'll ask the clerk to start the vote, please. Counselor Bezo, just looking for your vote there.
Just looking for these out for you.
Perfect.
Through you, Chair, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to delegations for Smart Investments for Sustainable Regina, MN 25-14, and I would like to call upon delegation DE 25-167, Kike Duick. Come on down to the delegation table. Hi, Kike. Okay, once you're settled in there, I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record. If you're representing an organization, you can say that, if not, that's okay. Which city or town you reside in, for the record, and then you'll have five minutes to speak, after which you can respond to any questions council may have for you. So whenever you're ready, you go right ahead.
Of course. Hi, my name is Kike Duick. I live here in Regina, Saskatchewan. I'm not representing an organization, and yeah, I'm gonna start. So I'm a youth, local youth climate activist here in Regina. I was also a delegate at the exec, exec, eh, at the executive committee meeting on August 20th, and I've experienced a lot of climate anxiety and worry lately over whether I was actually gonna see action, and, in the fact that if I can't get the, even the smallest or lowest level of government to act, then it seems as if no one will. And at this meeting, the city administration presented a progress report, implementation of the Regina Energy and Sustainability Framework, which found that only nine out of 84 actions were either complete or on track to be completed in the medium term. It may have been a while since you received a progress report or a grade, but if I got that grade in school, it would, I would be in trouble. In school right now, we're learning about rights and responsibilities, and I know that I have the right to a healthy environment and to life, and thus, you have the responsibility to give the youth of this city a good future by investing in sustainable development and framework. This is your role on tackling the climate crisis. I've read both of your plans, the Regina Energy and Sustainability Framework, and also the recently approved Resilient Regina. In both of them, you make it clear that action on climate is essential, and that the impacts of climates, climate change will be terrible. With the Resilient Regina strategy, there's an estimate by mid-century, climate change could cost Saskatchewan alone $3.1 billion in, in lost GDP. We know that that is also not the full damage of the climate crisis, because impact can't just be measured in GDP loss alone, and also the loss in quality of life. In Resilient Regina, it states that to meaningfully address climate change, the city of Regina must take an active role in climate action by addressing climate mitigation through dedicated effort to reduce GHG emissions, which you need to do and to accelerate. And you also need to take an active role in climate adaptation, addressing localized climate hazard and risks. This is all true, and you need to work on climate mitigation, not just for the people of Regina, but for the people of the world. The emissions that you're going to have now are going to affect people all across the world, not just in Regina or Saskatchewan. The council's vision outlined in the official community plan says, "Your vision is to be Canada's most vibrant, inclusive, attractive, and sustainable community, where people live in harmony and thrive in opportunity." And yet, we're falling behind on sustainability, which will also impact some of your other goals and visions. Take Saskatoon, for example. Start by following Saskatoon's lead. They have way more city staff focused on sustainability than Regina, and as a result, have the ability to make bigger action. You can invest in sustainable staffing in this area, so you can have the capacity to tackle renewable Regina initiatives that you have. Begin by getting to Tier Two building code, like they do. Action is possible, so if you believe in what your reports are, are saying and are actually trustworthy, then do the logical thing and take action. While a business's goal is to earn profit, a government should be to represent and make decisions for the benefit of the people. But, listening to what some members of the executive committee have spoken to me on August 20th, it seems like they believe that the government should be run like a business, and it felt like they only consider the internal cost and benefit of each project. And I've seen that a lot of action that seems like a business. Your decisions, a lot of the time, are based on money spent right now. That isn't right, and your job is to make not a decision about what will benefit the, what, not only about money, but also to benefit the people you're representing, and go do what people want to do. And based on a survey by Professor Brett Daltzer at the August 20th meeting, a majority of people in Regina want to live up to the goal in this energy and sustainability framework. So do that.
You have what, 30 seconds left?
Overall, if the city buses were transitioned to net zero emission buses, this would reduce CO2 emissions by a, um, exactly, well, about, um, 1,406, 1,200 tons. Think beyond traditional method, methods of calculating savings, you start to apply social cost of greenhouse gas emissions, and that has been endorsed by our federal government. You can see the scale of these savings and the, the climate impact. Electrifying Regina buses would save an additional $39 million. It will also cause other benefits, like cleaner air and public transportation.
Okay, I'll get you to close up your presentation, okay?
Of course, I'm open for questions.
Perfect. Okay, I'll check and see if any colleagues have questions today. Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Thank you for being here. Can you repeat the figure that you gave us about the loss of GDP in Regina projected as a result of climate change?
Mm-hmm. Within your Resilient Regina strategy, there's an estimate by, that by mid, mid-century, climate change could cost Saskatchewan alone $3.1 billion in lost GDP.
$3.1 billion?
Yes.
Could cost Saskatchewan, okay. Sorry, by which time?
By mid-century, about, like, not exactly, but yeah, it's an estimate.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Fro, go ahead.
Thank you, through the Chair. Kike, thanks for coming, I think you live in my ward, in Ward T.
I do.
Cathedral. Very impressed by your presentation.
Thank you.
You're very articulate, and so I commend you on, on your passion and for your advocacy, so thanks for that. I guess my question is, I watched your presentation last time, and that of Professor Daltzer, you spoke about climate, climate anxiety, and I have a couple of young kids, and I know that it's an issue that a lot of young people are facing as they, as they breathe in the smoke and they read the news, and of course, there's lots of good stuff from smart people happening as well, but I'm wondering if you could paint a picture for us, if we're not, those of us that might not be familiar with that term, as to what it means to you, and, you know, when you hear Professor Daltzer speak about social good, what that means to you, because I think you've done a good job today of reminding us that as a government, we do things every day that aren't just about only money. Please go ahead.
Um, so, climate anxiety has caused me a lot of challenges, and action helps with that, but it, it's a feeling of, like, hopelessness and also worry that action doesn't seem like it's coming, and that climate change will cause a drastically harder future to live in, and things for life that people in this generation and, like, me now, can take for given, won't be so reliable in the future, and that, that governments aren't seeming to take action, and the worry that we're not gonna have a easily livable future to enjoy when we're older. And I understand that a lot of other youth in my grade and at my school feel the same way, and I know high school students, and they say that the number of people who feel climate anxiety are even, are even higher there.
Kike, thanks for that, I hope you gained confidence through your advocacy. Keep it up, don't rely on adults to solve the problem, I think we've proven ourselves not yet up to the task, so thanks for your presentation today.
Thanks.
Thank you, and seeing no other questions, Kike, you can return to the gallery, thanks for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'd like to call upon delegation DE 25-171, Amy Snyder. And once you're settled, I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, today, what city or town you reside in, you'll have five minutes to address City Council, after which you will have the opportunity to respond to any questions we have for you. Go ahead, whenever you are ready.
Thank you. My name is Amy Snyder, I'm a resident of Regina, I'm here representing Regina Energy Transition. I have a few things to say on their behalf, and then I have a few things to ad lib from myself personally. First, I'd like to say that this motion in front of you today takes a common sense approach. takes a common sense approach to funding the Energy and Sustainability Framework, which we have, you have already committed to following. Either we continue to fall behind in our progress, we raise the mill rate for the sake of this framework, or we find other sensible ways to raise funds for carrying out its action items, ways which work in other cities such as Saskatoon. The motion is suggesting reports back to council on a few ways to take the latter approach, that is, to find common sense ways to raise and allocate funds for this framework. It's not a high-risk motion. Either admin will find these proposed fundraising ideas here are feasible, and we will advance in this important work, or admin will find that they are not feasible, and council can then evaluate the situation and move forward with more knowledge to come up with better solutions to the problem. And I ask you, what would be more sensible than that? Secondly, I'd like to say, on behalf of Regina Energy Transition, that the citizens of Regina were promised continued engagement in the form of an advisory group that would stay in place after the creation of the framework. That has not happened. This is a sign of the thus far lack of real commitment the city is making to this framework and to the promises made to it Regina's citizens. You can easily change that today. Finally, two councils before you have conducted intense work and engagement on this framework, as I just said, and have unanimously supported it. So for these reasons, it would look very bad on the current council to not take that commitment seriously and make all possible efforts to follow through with this framework. Many eyes are watching you today. I ask that you pass the motion so that we can show residents here and people across the province, country, and world that Regina is a place where elected officials listen to the people, keep their promises, and take common sense steps at problem solving. Personally, I want to add that I just returned from a trip up to northern Saskatchewan, near Missinippi. I was there on a research trip, as I am an artist, and my work deals with climate change, and in fact, specifically, climate anxiety, which is widespread. Seeing the forests that have burned is devastating. Passing cars on the road that were abandoned during evacuation have melted, metal glass on the road melted was very upsetting. These fires are increasing in intensity and frequency, not due to more teenage arsonists, but due to the known and very substantiated, scientifically acknowledged climate crisis, which we are continuing to create as Canada's highest emitters of CO2. It really troubles me when our elected officials don't take this seriously because this is the most important issue of our times. And it disturbs me to see councillors here, people at legislature, when Kike had Gerald Clark deliver a petition they had organized, people leaving the room, either physically, as Scott Mo did at that time, or here, on their phones, maybe thinking of dinner. We are talking about the future of our children's lives, the habitability for humans on our planet. I don't care where you fall on any political spectrum. I know I am judged as a leftist progressive who's going to always say, "We need to tax, we need to..." Think of others. I don't understand that mindset.
But thirty seconds left.
We all share one planet. We are citizens. It doesn't matter if we live in Mexico City or Regina, Saskatchewan. Our actions are contributing greatly to a global crisis. That is, as the Supreme Court of Canada has declared, an existential threat. I'd like to ask where the cranes are. The whooping cranes. And I'll end there and take questions.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Uh, Counselor Zekidniak, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, can you give, um, any additional background on, um, the promise of an advisory group, uh, to continue beyond the framework? Like, just that, um, because most of this council wasn't around at that time.
Certainly. The amount of engagement that went into the creation of this framework was noteworthy across the country. It attracted national attention. Part of that engagement was an advisory committee on which there were members from Enviro Collective and Regina Energy Transition, I believe. I wasn't with this organization at that time. But basically, they, the city was looking for input from people on the ground level, people who know what we're dealing with, and who are here to also support and guide the city in creating solutions to this problem. We were told that that advisory committee would remain, or a new one would be struck to carry on with this work. To my knowledge, that has not happened.
Okay, thank you. And, um, you said that in your work, you, um, deal with, um, like, you're, as an artist, um, that you focus on climate anxiety and that you've noticed that this is a widespread phenomenon. Can you give a bit more information about, um, it doesn't have to be numbers, but like, uh, just elaborate on that a bit further?
Members, respectfully, members of council, as my previous colleague in arms told you at the Executive Council meeting that they spoke to and just mentioned again now, uh, or was it Brett Dalter? One of them mentioned a study of 1,000 Canadian youth uh, uh, sim- uh, on the topic of climate anxiety and how it impacts their lives. There were many statistics shared with you that day. Was it August 27th or so? There's been another global study of 10,000 youth, 1,000 from each of 10 countries, not including Canada. And the data coming out of both studies align. The numbers are as shocking as those burnt cars that I passed on my drive to Missinippi. The numbers are such that 73 or so, forgive my aging memory, percent of our youth in these 11,000 youth surveyed feel that climate change is impacting their daily lives. I think forty-some percent feel the, that they may not have children, or 30 to 40 percent, again, forgive me, I don't have the numbers. Many say that it, it, that the world is scary, that their futures are scary, that they have no hope. These are, you find, discoverable by an easy Google search, and I could also send you a copy to your email if you'd like. Those are big studies, and some people might say, "Well, perhaps it depends on who you ask," or, you know, who knows the circumstances of these, although the 10,000 youth study was peer-reviewed. But I'd say too, from my personal experience, I talk to youth. I see and talk to youth who are very afraid of what the world will be like when they are my age, nearing 50. What opportunities will they still have? Or rather, what opportunities will they not have because of the state of the world? In this part of Canada, we'll be dealing with drought, we'll also be dealing with probably mass migration of people to our habitable climate. And how will we deal with that? So I, I don't know, I hope that answers your question.
I think I just have one more. You also mentioned that we have, that we're Canada's highest emitters?
Yes.
Of greenhouse gas emissions. Were you speaking specifically about Regina? Can you elaborate on that further?
I'm sorry, that is Saskatchewan. As a province, I don't have statistics for Regina specifically. I just know that we live in Saskatchewan. Uh, as I, I mentioned at the Executive Council meeting too, um, is it over half or roughly half? I think it's over half of the province's population lives in urban centers. Of course, majority of which in Saskatoon and Regina. That means that we could have a lot of sway over what the province is also doing, which is also sadly not enough. And so what happens at these meetings here and in Saskatoon is really, really important. And I know this because the David Suzuki Foundation is working with Regina Energy Transition because they know that it's at the municipal level that most change is possible and that it paves the way for other levels higher up to make similar changes.
Okay, actually, I do have one more, is just that you mentioned that administration, uh, if this passes, passes, would investigate these proposals and come back and either recommend that we do these things or not, and give us a thorough and comprehensive and objective report. Is that accurate?
Uh, I mean, I read your motion, like everybody here presumably did. I understand that you are asking for, uh, for reports on new initiatives. You give three examples, increasing parking ticket fines and updating our stormwater runoff, uh, uh, plans, uh, our, our fees for stormwater runoff for businesses in a way that Saskatoon is already doing, in a way that is not adding a new tax to citizens, but a pay-per-use model, which works almost everywhere else. And that you are asking for it, an investigation into whether tax exemptions for individuals and businesses who adopt clean energy, uh, technology could be feasible. So yes, it's a report that you're being asked to vote for here. It isn't diving off the deep end. It's, as I said, a very sensible sounding suggestion with creative initiative ideas, thanks to Counselor Zekidniak, which, if they're feasible, why not take them? And if they're not, we'll move on and find something that is. But this framework isn't going to go away. It's been eight-plus years in the making, I believe. And something has to happen so that your next progress report is an A+, not an F.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manzonielli, go ahead.
Uh, through the chair, uh, having been here for a while and been part of the implementation of the framework. Um, I noted i- in your delegate words that, uh, Saskatchewan were the worst emitters. Uh, knowing that Regina and Saskatoon account for half the population, as you indicated, um, Regina and Saskatoon both having a framework, does your organization have membership in the surrounding communities? And do you lobby those municipalities that aren't engaging in a framework? I'm just asking because your passion is very valid, and knowing that we're engaged and moving forward, uh, I'm just making sure that with your worries of Saskatchewan as a whole, uh, how is that effort going to help others cooperate with us?
Regina Energy Transition's focus is, as the name suggests, focused on Regina. We do not, as far as I know, consult with other rural municipalities or areas near Regina. I, I'm not quite sure if I understand what the question is precisely. I, I see that as a Regina-based group, we focus on you folks right here, with the knowledge, though, that what the larger urban centers do, other urban centers and rural municipalities are likely to follow. And as I said, what happens here could influence what happens at the provincial level as well.
My apologies, I thought you mentioned Enviro Collective as well, which I didn't think was a Regina-based organization. And once again, knowing that Regina is engaged in this already, and from the context of the Enviro Collective not being Regina-based, I was wondering if you had approached any other, uh, you know, mid-sized cities or towns, or, uh, ventured your worries about Saskatchewan's pollution to others?
I see, I'm sorry for misunderstanding. I am not here representing Enviro Collective. I just mentioned them as an organization that had been on the advisory committee in the lead-up to this framework.
Oh, okay, okay.
I will say, though, that Ri- at Enviro Collective is largely Regina-based. Its, its board members are in Regina, or last I knew, and I was one for five years. Uh, it was actually started by your very own Counselor Zekidniak many years before she became a councillor.
Appreciate the answers, thank you.
Thank you, seeing no other questions, thank you for your presentation today. You can return to the gallery.
Thank you.
Okay, we have communications on item MN 25-14. Can I have a motion to receive and file the following communications? CP 25-139, Tamara Chitron, Regina Energy Transition, and CP 25-142, Dr. Brett Dalter from the University of Regina. Counselor Radins, and a seconder. Counselor Flores, I'll call the question, any opposed? And carried. We will now consider motion MN 25-14, Smart Investments for a Sustainable Regina, and I will ask Counselor Zekidniak to please introduce her motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I've been, um, while working on my motion, I did reach out to administration to ensure clarity and for any questions that they had. And in reviewing the impacts of the carbon tax removal, administration is finding that they aren't seeing the savings that some had predicted. Um, can someone please elaborate on that through the chair?
We just have to get the motion on the floor first, and then you can continue your questions.
Okay, well, so, I mean, so there's the, some amendments, and so I'm just trying to, like, so just out of, for the sake of clarity, what are you asking for me?
I will ask the acting clerk to clarify.
Uh, through you, Chair. Uh, so Counselors Zekidniak, I know that you made amendments to your motion, so you would read that out, your motion out of what you're moving, which includes those amendments that you made, so that it's clear the intent of what it is that you're wanting, councillor, to ask questions and debate on today at the meeting. And then we would get a seconder before we can start asking questions of administration and enter debate.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm not gonna read my entire motion. Is that what you're asking for?
We can get it up on the screen, but you need to identify the changes that you made to your motion.
Does that count in my speaking time?
Your speaking time will start after you introduce your motion.
Um, so, I mean, you can't, this is why I was asking the question, to explain the amendment, but if you want to put it up, that's totally fine. So to, so then to clarify the changes, is that, that's what you're looking for right now? So, uh, part one, A, um, sorry, if you, can you remove the marking, the markup? I find that distracting, that's just me. Um, so the amendment is to, the report back to council um, in relation to the carbon tax expenses, and this is where I was gonna ask administration to explain, unfortunately, beyond the initial savings that they had found that they're not seeing at this time, savings in relation to the carbon tax. And, um, also, the other change is further on in the motion to just clarify that the report back on everything would include stakeholder engagement for, for the above actions, recommendations and a potential implementation plan. So just like all of our reports should, it will include the opportunity for stakeholder feedback. Okay, so now I can be, or we need a second.
Yeah, so, so with those changes, I'll let council members review that, but, uh, I'd look for a seconder, uh, for that. Counselor Flores. Okay, and then it'll be back to you, Counselors Zekidniak, to, uh, speak to the motion.
Okay, so the question is, uh, for administration to speak to the fact that they aren't seeing the savings that some had predicted from the removal of the carbon tax at this time.
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, and through the chair. So you are correct, councillor. Uh, we, of course, do quarterly forecasting. As part of the package here today that was in consent, we had the second quarter forecast. Uh, that is roughly one quarter into us no longer having the carbon tax. What we've identified so far, uh, in one quarter's worth of information that has become material is our reduction in revenue related to the fees we collect, uh, from Sask Energy and Sask Power, in that they no longer include the carbon tax as part of the base. So we are seeing a reduction in revenue. Uh, we are, we are seeing the realization of the $500,000 that we put in the budget at the time we did the 1.55 reductions. We are seeing, uh, that, and that related to energy costs on our facilities. are seeing that, and that related to energy costs on our facilities. What we aren't seeing is any other material changes in our costs. So, an example of fuel, while the carbon tax is no longer on fuel, we are not seeing a material change in our actual costs versus what we budgeted. Now, there can be lots of reasons for that councillor, but because we're only one quarter in, it's hard for us to determine why we're not seeing those savings. So, what we would like to recommend, as you said here, is to wait for our year-end to be done in May-June, where we can get a fulsome amount, right? We'll have three quarters of information, and we can take time then to bring a report back to council that identifies where we should be seeing savings and whether or not we are.
And would that information be useful for you to gather? So that's what I'm now asking for. Would it be useful for administration to have the report on what are the impacts of the carbon tax removal?
Through the chair, so yes, I fully expect the province to ask us for similar information. They have asked us throughout the year for different, at different points, for information on this. So, we will probably be looking into it regardless.
Okay. And so what timeframe would you then recommend? I left that blank because I'm open to, I think you said, anyway, what timeframe do you recommend to, for that report back?
Thank you. And through the chair, we would recommend sort of the beginning of quarter three or into quarter three. Given we don't get our final year-end numbers until May, usually late May, it then gives us some time to sort of dig in and really find out where, in those numbers, the carbon tax is having an impact. Hopefully that works with your timelines.
That's fine. Thank you. Now, so with this revision, the only, what I'm now asking for with my motion is reports on the feasibility, so, you know, the report on the carbon tax and the feasibility of the new initiatives that are being proposed in section B. I am asking, including the report back on the community advisory group. I am asking us to just, to make a commitment that we will have a community advisory group, but I'm asking administration to report back on the parameters of what that, their recommendations for what that group should look like. And here's why. Here's why I'm asking for that commitment. There was an initial community advisory group established during the creation of the Energy and Sustainability Framework, and I was co-chair of that body. And it had widespread community representation from community members, industry and business. This allowed comprehensive feedback during the creation of our framework and resulted in a document that these stakeholders were able to endorse. A commitment was made during that process that would, there would be some form of continuation of an advisory body moving forward. I don't know if any of the administration folks on this file now would be able to speak to that process or confirm that commitment, but I'm just wondering if anyone does have a recollection or the institutional knowledge to affirm that.
Sorry, Mr. Anderson, who are you pointing to? For Mr. Tran.
Okay, Mr. Tran, go ahead.
Through the chair, yes, I've done a little bit of digging on what exactly was promised back then. So, during the development of the original ESF, there was that community advisory group, as you said. That group was closed off for, for whatever reason at that point in time, but there was a promise to reform that group. Under what circumstances, I don't exactly know, or what the intent of that group was supposed to be going forward. So that would still have to be established.
Right. And this is where the report back, what I would like to see is administration make recommendations to us about what format of a community advisory group would help for, help them to be the most successful. And also to note that our Energy and Sustainability Framework is not just a corporate plan for the city of Regina organization. It is a community plan, which is also intended to drive down community emissions. Is it accurate that we've, we're not making the intended progress on our community scale emissions? Through the chair.
Mr. Tran.
Through the chair, yes, that is correct. As we noted in the ESF update report last month, that is correct. We are not meeting those goals.
So it is possible that the community advisory group could help with this, with the inclusion of community members and groups who wish to advance the plan and business and industry and others who have the ability to take on measures to help drive down community emissions. However, as we know from our recent Energy and Sustainability Framework report, we are not meeting many of the targets outlined. So I would leave it up to administration to make recommendations for what format of that group would be most helpful to them. If done well, a community advisory group can also make our jobs easier if well-vetted ideas with community support come to council for consideration from that committee. Regarding the new initiatives section, I want to clarify that we do already pay stormwater utility fees. And so I'm simply proposing that administration comes back to us with recommendations for updating this model for commercial and industrial users, which is based on the model that Saskatoon uses. This model allows commercial and industrial users who create less runoff into our stormwater system to pay less. You can achieve this through permeable surfacing, plants to absorb water, or capturing water through, capturing gray water and reusing it. If you discharge more water into our stormwater system, you pay more, and if you discharge less, you pay less. Again, only for industrial and commercial users. By updating fees for commercial and industrial users, it can actually decrease stormwater fees for residential users as the cost is spread out more equitably. Regarding the proposal for tax extensions, our staffer in the midst of developing a program that would enable folks to apply loans for energy efficiency upgrades directly to their homes. I'm suggesting that tax exemptions could be rolled out at the same time. Again, we'd hear recommendations from admin respecting this and all of the proposals. Regarding parking fines, this is specific to parking tickets. I'm proposing administration report back on a potential increase to parking tickets, and these funds would be diverted to our transit fleet reserve, which we've learned is significantly underfunded regardless of which types of buses we choose to purchase. If we can't find other ways to add revenue to this reserve, admin would need to resort to a mill rate increase, and I'm proposing a different path. So these ideas will be explored with stakeholder consultation and administration would, I just want administration to recommend the report back date for their analysis of these proposals.
Okay, and I just saw, I think, acting city manager had a comment to make.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand where you're coming from councillor Zakidniak, with respect to the community measurements not being, or the community goals not being met. When the framework was done, it's my understanding that the, we as a city can only control our emissions and our goals and our objectives, and that we were to use the best offices that we can, best examples, et cetera, that would indicate to others that things could be done and we hope to bring them along. But we cannot make them. We have no authority. And so I just want to caution that the formation of a community advisory group, which may have some great objectives to it, is not by itself going to cause other external entities to change their plans. Those are completely theirs to make. And we will have some updates going forward next year, and we hope to see some progress. But again, I have to stress that we cannot make businesses in the city do certain things just because we are trying to set the objectives. It's a good objective to do, but we don't hold the levers on a lot of that.
Okay, and councillor, you have about fifteen, sixteen seconds left, so go ahead.
Right. I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that we're controlling that. I was giving an example for what an advisory group could be, and maybe it's for the community, maybe it's for us. I would leave that to administration. But I'm still needing a recommendation for the report back on all of these initiatives from administration.
Okay, and I'll just ask, sorry, Mr. Anderson, before that, we do need a, something to fill in for the report back for executive committee. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, the mayor. We would recommend beginning of quarter four for this report. There is some complexities around operations that we want to make sure that with combination of Mr. Donie's team and myself, we would want to have time to get all through. Hopefully that's, that's acceptable.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll go to councillor Fro. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Just a question first for councillor Zakidniak. Under new initiatives, your last bullet, is it your intention that the analysis of the fine structure, that any revenue is generated from that would be, would be directed, like, is electrification of the fleet the objective? Or are you looking for a report on options, how we may redirect those dollars towards, towards transit? Like, is it solely electrification, or might we say transit, but then include electrification amongst other options? Just looking to find some consensus maybe here, understanding that this is just a report.
For the sake of simplicity, we could just update that section to say with new revenues dedicated to the transit fleet reserve.
Thank you.
Is that that accurate name of the reserve? Okay, thank you.
Thank you through the chair. To administration, I suspect you'll do this, but I'd just like to, to ask that administration, when you consult on the stormwater runoff, that you consult with the industrial sector, understanding that some of our industrial clients and companies within this city have very large parcels of land and the steel fabrication manufacturing sort of sectors. So would it be possible to ensure, I suspect you would, that we do some engagement with the industrial sector in the city to understand what benefits or challenges this may present to them?
And just really quickly, before I go to administration, I just want to make sure that councillor Flores, as the seconder, is okay with the small change with respect to the transit fleet reserve there. Okay, all good. With that, who would like to speak to councillor Fro's question Somebody can put their hand up, then I know who to go to. Thank you. Go ahead.
Through the chair, yes, we can definitely include that as part of our engagement.
Okay, sorry, just getting through with my, my colleagues. Through the chair, to administration, referencing professor Doulter's submission on this issue, taking any work to look at a spend-based, emission-based, social good framework. Where I'm going with that is, professor Doulter is encouraging us to look at cost-benefit. I'm very interested, for every dollar we spend as a city, if it, if it's related to sustainability, to make sure we're spending the right dollar on the right thing. Meaning, for every dollar we spend, we should be looking, if we are going to spend it, at ways in which reduce, emissions are reduced materially, but it also aligns with our civic functions and ideally sort of social good. So there's many industry standards for municipalities that quantify and give a council a sort of a quantifiable measurement if we're going to do something or not. But before we go down this path or not, I'm just curious if administration is working on any sort of quantifiable tool that would allow you to report back to council when we're making decisions on electrification of the fleet, or geothermal, or procurement practices as a community?
Mr. Tran, go ahead.
Through the chair, I wouldn't say that administration is developing anything new or official in, in reference to anything related to social good. That being said, I would say that administration does take into account all of those factors when we're developing more of a robust ROI on all the projects that we bring forward to council.
Through the chair, I suspect all of my colleagues, regardless of whether we support our initiative or not, will always want to make sure if we're spending a dollar, it's the right dollar. So I think certainly in the future, I'll be bringing forward a motion after consulting with administration that will give us a spend emission, a quantifiable tool to sort of help guide us to make decisions on some of these things. I guess I would just say in closing, thanks to my colleague Shannon for bringing this forward and for the delegates. I think I've heard several times, and especially of late, that, you know, in Regina and Saskatchewan, we can't do much about climate change in relation to the challenge. This is a province where we quite literally mine potash 3,000 meters below the earth in ancient seabeds. I think, I don't know, Dan, horizontal drilling of oil happens between 1,000 and 3,000 meters, you know, dryland farming, zero tail. Look, we do have a lot of things. My point here is, done correctly, right, what we do at the municipal level and in our community can serve as a roadmap for addressing a climate change. And I think done correctly can also be done in such a way that creates a lot of jobs. So, we're simply asking for a report here, you know? The, you never score a touchdown if you don't run a play. So I think what we're looking at here is to ensure that the playbook we have and the roadmap is adequate. And I would just say, maybe in closing, there is some narrative out there in the community, very harmful narrative, I would say, that spreads misinformation and does our community a disservice. Thankfully, people of Regina are smart enough to understand, but we're not talking about a carbon tax or a rain debt tax. We're talking about how we might redirect savings and how we might find ways to save water and protect our infrastructure and ideally save money. So, we're asking for a report. We'll see what that report says. But given that you're looking for information, councillor Zakidniak, I'll certainly be supporting this, and I'll base my vote on what that information says when it comes back. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fro. Councillor Manzanelli, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Done a lot of votes on the environment. I'm a big advocate. Have a couple reservations here I want to go through. For point one, A, the reallocation of the carbon tax expenses, there was a comment that this work had to be done anyways for the province and a suggestion on time. Just remembering some of the stuff we've been through, the reorganization of finances, the AMAL reports for the Audit Finance Committee, the new style of reporting for everything from what's laid over from construction to the quarterly reports on the reserves. There's some better extra work in that office already. Knowing that there's no longer a carbon tax and trying to figure out how much we save and then trying to reallocate when we're already trying to budget and we have limited funds, and every time we make a decision to renew something, we have to renew it to today's standard, which is an environmental standard, especially in the building-built form. I'm fearing that we're going to use a lot of our money chasing pennies on a piece of paper instead of doing what we need to do if we're always trying to build a report around something that we already know. So that's my reservations. I know Mr. Anderson walked away. I was just wondering if I could have a comment on that, on to what degree they'd have to report on and how much extra work it is to report this way.
Okay, Mr. May, go ahead.
Through the chair, thank you councillor. I appreciate the question. What I can say is that Mr. Anderson has given it some thought in terms of the extra work it would take, but he's identified that we have the capacity to pull this off, given the timeframe that he suggested.
Okay, okay. We're on budget time, so I know every time a motion comes out, it's a spend we didn't have before, and I'm taking it through that point of view as I'm going through this, just for the record. Another thing I'd like to ask through, through the chair, is there's one, A, B and C, and then two, and then three in the report. The bullet points behind one, B, one of them really interests me. I can see the wisdom in updating the stormwater utility fees. Being a commercial property owner and a resident as well, I look at my commercial property and it has nothing to do with water soaking in anywhere. It's all a parking lot because that's what my business entails. That would put an extra load on the stormwater system. I know there's other businesses that way, as well as a corporate entity. I can adjust a little bit to the pricing. My employees can't. They have to pay stormwater runoff fees, just like my residents do. I can see the fairness point councillor Zakidniak brought up with that, and I think that's definitely worth investigation. Once again, looking how administration has to plan how we use our money, the fact that we got a budget coming out and to section off and reallocate before we've had a chance to kind of formulate our first budget, I don't really think I want to support that right now at this time. So I'd like to kind of vote on those separately as bullet points, but they're not laid out in one, A, B or C. Also with the intent of worrying about how much work I'm making for administration to review and put into place.
Councillor Manzanelli, can you just lay out so we can properly separate out what you're looking to vote on separately?
Well, I guess you could put the bullet points into, like, Roman numerals, I, II, and III.
I, 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 captain.
Yeah. Yeah. Would be one way of doing it, but, you know, I'm not a report writer, so I probably screwed it up.
No, that, that works. I'll just ask which I's you want separated into individual votes.
They hit it already there. Under B, there's I, II, and III.
Okay, so all, so all of B, separate all of B into three separate votes?
Yeah, just like it sits there, it'd be fine with me.
One moment. Councillor Manzanelli, so we would be doing B, I as a vote, B, II, as a vote, and B, III as a vote?
That's right.
I feel like you just did that to make me say that, but that's okay. So I'm going to go to councillor Fro for a point of clarification, and I'll go to the acting city manager. Councillor Fro, go ahead.
Thank you. I hope this is a point of I hope this is a point of clarification, but it's certainly material to me on how I support the first piece, which is understanding the reallocation of savings from carbon tax, such as, if we pass that today, am I correct that it's simply a report, or are we preempting the budget somehow? That may not be a point of clarification, but I am looking for that information to understand, you know, how that affects our budget process or not. I think that's material. Hope I'm in order. Thanks.
I'll get the Acting City Clerk to speak to that part.
Through you, Chair. My understanding of the way I read the motion, the directive, is that Administration is supposed to do this work and report back in 2026, which would mean I don't believe that this is affecting any decisions with respect to the 2026 budget. But I would ask Administration to comment as well to you unless I've misunderstood something.
Okay, Counsel Zekidniak, do you have a comment to make on that?
Yeah, can you display actually Part A, so that folks can see it? Because I want to make sure that it's clear that Part A has been updated. And so what is now being asked for is, this is for Counsel Mansonelli's benefit as well. So what I am simply asking for now is a report back in Q3 of 2026 regarding the financial impacts of the removal of the carbon tax. That is it. So whatever was previously in Part A has been removed, and that is the new Part A.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so Acting City Manager, I'll go to you now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say from Administration's point of view, we would certainly echo what the clerk said. We are looking at, Part A is a Q3 of next year report, the following one is Q4 of '26, and depending on what comes out of that, of course, you would then be able to make any changes, et cetera, to the '27 budget, because the second year of the budget is still open for tweaks, considerations, revisions at that time. So we don't see this as having any impact on the budget that you're preparing this December.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Mansonelli, I'll go back to you.
Okay. Once again, I'm kind of coming at this from a line of sight, worried about expenses. When we establish a community advisory group and we dedicate staff towards it, what kind of costs go into something like that annually? Can anyone give me an estimate through the Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is kind of a two-part answer, because the clerk's office would be responsible for this. And so there's always, you know, there's administrative work, there's paper, there's, you've got to do some engagement, recruitment, et cetera, et cetera. And then, of course, depending on how widespread this is, I mean, then you start to get into expenses from the clerk's office, which I don't want to overstate. I mean, an advisory group should not be costing you thousands and thousands of dollars unless they would have approval to have expertise to them. Again, it's completely Council's prerogative to determine whether you want one or not. As I said before, and I've said repeatedly over my tenure here at the city, you just have to be careful that you don't set up an expectation with any advisory group, because what has historically happened is that advisory groups make recommendations and provide advice, and then if and when they are not accepted by the Council, then criticisms start. And part of that is because the community, any advisory group, is ultimately not the one accountable to the taxpayer. So Council tends to get it in the ear if they don't like it, but that's just part of the challenge. So I'm not saying to set one up or not, but from my perspective, I always want to raise that caution, that you've got to set the expectations of both sides, both Council and any advisory group, very clearly, because they are there to provide advice and recommendations, but they do not have the final say.
And I think the Acting City Clerk wants to add to that as well.
Through you, Chair, just to piggyback off of some of the Acting City Manager's comments, with respect to establishing the advisory group and whether or not there would be any additional costs involved with that, I think we would bring that information back in the report about the details of, A, whether or not it is recommended that one be established. I think another consideration that we would be looking at as well too is how long would this advisory group need to be established for? Is this going to be an ongoing advisory committee? Or would there be a sunset clause in there indicating that the advisory committee should only be established until such time that the terms of reference or the work that Council wishes for them to achieve as an advisory group is achieved? Those will be some of the things that we look at when we come back with our recommendations with respect to this piece.
Appreciate that information, thank you. Developing targeted time, limited tax exemptions for individuals and businesses that adopt clean technologies. I believe in all those technologies. I invest in all those technologies as a person, as a business owner. I would like to see more people invest in these technologies, but on a property tax-based system, where we're always behind the eight ball after many budgets, to eke out some of those property taxes, to invest this way as a municipality when that's not what we collect off of generally, especially after we lost the carbon tax money through the feds that, of course, have been identified by Administration. I can't see this as a viable investment right now with the tight times we're experiencing. So that's why I've asked for the vote to be split up. It's not that I don't believe in this. I'm anxious to see what the federal government reorganizes with their forthcoming changes and to revisit this in the future, but I don't think right now I'm comfortable investing Administration's time and wages and efforts into going down this path, because I don't think I can afford to section off the tax base to support it that I represent with my vote. The same can be said for me for the parking fine structure. Those are revenues that we use as a city. I've heard some talk about that being a lever for the downtown to overcome some of its issues. I think that these things have to be settled through budget and organizations and Council before I enact them through a motion like this. And so that's why I've asked to have those sectioned off in individual votes. I respect Counsel Zekidniak very much for her dedication to the environment and to this cause, and I maintain many of the same beliefs. I'm coming in from a pragmatic view of implementing them, budgeting, and trying to keep things moving forward. Every time the city updates an asset, as I said, it updates it with a future-looking view that's been implemented in the framework. I want to keep Administration having those funds flowing so they can spend their time looking on the assets they're updating and keeping forward, looking on what they know already. That's how I'm looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple comments on my end. Similar sentiment to Counsel Mansonelli for a couple of these items, but, you know, given that we heard that the capacity appears to be there for Administration to understand what that looks like, I'm curious as to if other municipalities and what's happening, again, I always talk about us being a competitive municipality, so I'm curious as to what that looks like, knowing that we're not making a decision today on any new taxation or anything like that. I'm curious to see where we fall in line, and that's something that was actually brought up in some of our budget conversations already, to see where we fall in line with some of these things. So I am curious where we land, so I'd be curious to see what some of this information comes back as. But I do have some cautions when it does come back as to how that would be implemented and how that fits in our overall structure. So with that, I'll be supporting the report, a factor of this, but definitely interested to see how this would actually fit as a part of our actual structure. So with that, I will go to Counsel Bezo. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through the Chair, we just received a report that came through Audit and Finance today that had a bottom-line number of our quarterly profit-to-loss. Could Administration tell us what that number is?
Mr. May, go ahead.
Through the Chair, we're currently projecting that at the end of the year, we will see a deficit of about 1.6% of our operating budget.
What does that work into a dollar value, please?
About $10.3 million.
Okay, thank you. So we're operating a deficit of $10.3 million. Is there any savings that we're realizing, or we're strictly at a deficit right now?
Through the Chair, overall, we'll be experiencing a deficit, at least that's what our current forecast is showing.
Okay. So just back to Counsel Mansonelli's sense of, you know, big pragmatic, we're sitting in a situation right now that we're sitting at a $10 million deficit. And through the Chair, can I ask Administration one more time to remind us what our projected tax increase this year is right now as it stands?
So, yeah, I think we should just clarify that right now we have a financial forecast in front of us, because we have budget deliberations in December. So I just want to clarify the language around that. But with that financial forecast, our starting point of those discussions is, you can go ahead and answer that, Mr. May.
Through the Chair, given our current forecast, we're forecasting a funding gap in operations, general operations, of around 40-some million dollars, which, if you were to equate that to a mill rate increase, would be around 13%.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to hear that again. So with last year's 7%, this year's 13%, we're looking pretty much at a 20% increase.
Okay. Counsel Fro, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, just through the Chair, unless I'm misunderstanding the budget process that we've embarked upon, the process is by no way a projected budget, a proposed budget, nor the budget. I think we should be careful throwing around that 13%. So we've opened up our budget process to be more transparent, to show the public what Administration typically goes through. This is not a proposed budget, nor is it the budget. So I call that as a point of order to caution that number, because I don't want to spread misinformation in our community.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Fro. And Counsel Bezo, I'll echo that. I think we've got to be careful to make sure we're accurately depicting the process that we're going through with respect to financial forecast, because we ultimately have decisions to make in budget time in December, so I respectfully ask that we stick to that.
100% agree. We are sitting at a known budget increase last year, or this past year, and a significant lift again this year. And Administration said we're sitting at a funding shortfall of $10 million as an operational budget this year. So I just want to get some clarification, some context around, you know, what savings are we going to do with this carbon tax? We have no savings. Right now, we're looking at another taxation, call it a levy, call it what you will. We are looking at a report that's going to look at the impact of this tax on commercial properties, this levy, this fee on commercial properties. We're going to look at, commercial properties include grocery stores, they also include the development that we just approved today, because there's commercial properties in the bottom level, which also has an impact on residential. We also have commercial properties which are in data. So every single one of these reports has the potential of having that associated cost with it. When we look at some of these initiatives, we looked at an electric bus purchase and had $27 million in the reserve prior to the purchase, now we're looking at a deficit of $10 million.
Okay, I think Counsel Zekidniak has a point of order, sorry. Go ahead, Counsel Zekidniak.
It was mentioned that there was an additional tax. This is not proposing any additional taxes, and I think it's really important that we stick to the facts. We already have stormwater utility fees. I am proposing that we change the structure so that folks will be charged based on the amount of stormwater that they discharge into the system. It is not a new tax or a new fee, and I think that is very important for us to keep clear.
And just to be clear, this is a report back on this, correct?
That's correct. All of these, and also, we're not talking about the budget for this year, that's not what my motion is proposing, so I think we should stick to the motion at hand, which has nothing to do with this year's budget.
Okay, thank you very much. You know what, then I'll ask a question particular around stormwater, and the question around, through the Chair, can you describe, Administration describe, the stormwater system? Do we have a capacity issue? Are we undersized? Are we oversized? Are we at the right size? Stormwater off of parking lots, like what happens to this stormwater? Where does it go?
Mr. Doni, go ahead.
Through the Chair, so, yes, we've got a stormwater system that includes what's called a minor and a major system, so underground pipes and overflow on our streets. Different areas of the city are developed at different times, and so some parts of the city are designed to a 100-year storm event, and we consider that best practice in the newer areas. Some of the older areas are not designed to that higher standard, and that's why we do major stormwater upgrade projects throughout the city to reduce that risk of flooding. That's all part of the utility model that you'll see in budget time.
Thank you. Is that infrastructure fee captured already in the budget? Or budget, shall we say?
Through the Chair, yes, as part of our utility model and our utility budget, we've got the cost to renew the existing stormwater infrastructure, but also the cost to upgrade that stormwater infrastructure over a long period of time.
Okay, thank you very much. And through the Chair, how do we collect stormwater renewal project fees or money to rejuvenate the systems?
Through the Chair, so currently, our stormwater fees that are collected go into the utility model, and that utility is used to fund both drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater system.
Okay, thank you very much. So just for a point of clarification, if you have a utility bill, you are already paying a fee, correct?
Through the Chair, yes, there is a stormwater fee on your utility bill.
Okay, thank you very much. You know what, just that we heard from Administration, we already have something in place, we have mechanisms in place, and every time we look at something of this nature, we're looking at putting a financial burden on our taxpayers in a most affordable that can't afford it. I will not support this motion.
So just before I go to you, Counsel Rasevich, I'm just going to ask for a motion to waive our 15-minute break, if you guys are okay with that, based on, so right now, I can tell you I have Counsel Rasevich to speak, and then we would go to close, and then we would go to vote. If we have anybody else that's going to speak, I would suggest putting their light on. Thank you, Counsel Turnbull. So with that, I would look to see if we would, I would propose we forego our break to keep going, but if we need a break and anybody's opposed, we can take that mandatory break. So I'd look to move motion to see if anybody would like to make a motion. Thank you, Counsel Flores, Seconder, Counsel Siklis, and anyone oppose? Okay, thank you, we will carry on. Counsel Rasevich, go ahead.
Through the Chair, I just look at some of these points, and I'm just thinking, last year, we had a 7% plus mill rate increase, we have a potential higher mill rate increase than 7% this year. I'm not saying it's going to happen, hopefully it'll be lower than 7. But right now, we're in this position of affordability in this city and in this country. We have higher unemployment in this country that's gone up 7%. We're in a trade war, inflation's high, groceries are high. And I just look at some of these things up on the screen, I'm going, so is it the city's job to create tax incentives to, for people, our neighbors to buy solar panels? That should be provincial or federal. That's not in our budget. That, we just, I mean, again, as a city, we should be staying in our lane.
So I just want to remind, we're not talking about budget, because this does not have budget implications for this year. So I just want to make sure we're really clear that, you know...
It could be that, it could be in 2027.
Yep, that's fair. I just want to make sure, because we had some clarification from Admin on that, so I just want to make sure we're not conflating this particular motion with this particular budget here.
Yeah, but, okay, again, I don't think it's the city's job to give tax exemptions for some of my neighbor to get a solar panel, I got to pay for it. I would also look at parking fees. I think, you know what, again, we're talking about potential high mill rates, we need to use those funds to look after and keep our rates lower, instead of, you know, again, going towards possible one-time tax exemptions, you know? And then, you know, if you start talking about electrification, right now, if you look at where our power comes from, so windmill capacity in this province is over 800 megawatts on a good day, if it was fully going, it's 800-plus megawatts. Right now, it's operating at about 90. So even if you draw electricity and you want to electrify, you're still drawing it from, you're still drawing it from a carbon base, whether it's natural gas or coal. So, you know, never mind what the batteries are made of. You've got to replace a bus battery every seven years, it's made from cobalt, lithium. How often do we have to change a battery in the bus, Administration? I read in the report, it was seven years.
Mr. Doni, go ahead.
Through the Chair, I can provide that information if you'd like, but it's not...
So, we're not talking about electric buses.
Okay.
So, the motion on the floor, I would like to stick to the motion on the floor. If there's any comments, questions about the motion on the floor, let's stick to that, please. Thank you.
Well, we're talking, you were talking about electrification. Okay. So again, should our tax dollars and parking fees be going, going to tax incentives, you know, in this motion? I personally, I don't think so. I think it should be going to keep, go into what our infrastructure, go towards things that we're supposed to do as a city and stay in our lanes. The province, if the province or the federal government wants to pay for it, I think they can pay for it. We only have limited funds in this city. Again, I want to keep businesses in this city. I don't want to drive them away, you know, whether it's stormwater, extra stormwater fees, and et cetera, you know. So I, well, I can't support this.
I think the acting city manager wanted to make a comment, if that's okay. Counselor Rasevich?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and to members of council. I think the fundamental question with this motion before you is, do you want this information to come back in the report next year or not? That's basically the fundamental question that's being asked here. Counselor Zakidniak has put forward a motion that she says, come back at this time next year and then following in January or February of 27, with information that would look at all of these issues and the implications. So again, I just say respectfully, the fundamental question before you is, do you want this motion to direct admin to do this work or not? And if you want admin to do the work, then you pass the vote, and we've got our marching orders.
Thank you, acting city manager. Go ahead, Counselor.
Well, there's definitely points in there that, you know, I don't think administration needs, to use your time, time and energy, sometimes to go into some of these points where certain funds do not need to be redirected, you know, we need to keep our mill rates down and focus on the things that we need to do as a city. I guess that's kind of what my comment, you know, instead of administration spending a lot of extra time on other, on other, I guess, ventures, things like this. I mean, I guess the community advisory group, I guess if that was separated out, if you want to maybe put something like that together, I guess I'd be fine with that, if you want to separate that out. But all these other points are, these are all dollar points. These are, it's all dollars. And I think those dollars should be directed to keeping our mill rate down and doing the right thing for our citizens.
So Counselor Rasevich, I just heard you say, I think you want to separate out point C?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just separate that right out, and if they wanted...
Okay, anything, anything else, Counselor Rasevich?
Nope.
Okay. Counselor Turnbull, go ahead.
Okay. To the chair, I have some questions to administration. You mentioned that you're going to be doing the work anyways for the carbon tax expenses. Will we be receiving that with or without this point one of the motion?
Mr. Mead, go ahead.
Through the chair, I believe what Mr. Anderson indicated is, we've been asked for information like this from the province over the course of time. We think they'll ask us again. We're not, we don't know that for certain. It's fine to leave it in as it is, and we'll just report back either way.
Well, just the wording of this says reallocation of carbon tax expenses and then report back. So reporting back versus the reallocation are two different things, are they not?
I think Counselor Zakidniak is indicating, probably clarifying that. Go ahead, Counselor Zakidniak.
We can, it was originally called reallocation of carbon tax expenses. We can just take that piece out so there's no confusion, and then it just says the report back. Like, that is fine.
Okay.
Is that, and then Counselor Flores, would you be okay with that? Okay, so Counselor Turnbull, back to you.
Okay, so now it's just a report without the pick. Perfect. And then I did have some questions about, if you want to go back to, I think it's three I's. I think three I's is the one I have some questions about. So through the chairs, to the administration, was, I was told there's been, there was a parking plan back in 2014. Is that correct?
Mr. Doni, go ahead.
I'm just sorry, could you repeat that question, please?
The City of Regina, did the City of Regina do a parking plan back in 2014? Do we have a parking plan and some recommendations from that?
Through the chair, I don't have that history. I'll ask Mr. Kalim if he has that, if he needs more clarity of what the parking plan may have entailed.
Go ahead.
Through your Mr. Chair, yes, there was a parking study done. I don't know if it was 2014, but it was in and around that time.
Okay. And so I have heard from some downtown businesses, and recently, the council even met with downtown, and they also were looking at parking fees as a possibility for a source to enhance downtown. So there's a little bit of a holistic picture to the fines when it comes to the structure with parking fees. And I do plan on, when we get to the budget, which I think is the meeting after this, doing a little bit of referral to ask a little about the parking. And I would like to see that in a more holistic way. So for that reason, I wouldn't want to isolate it just for sustainability because it is also being eyed up for downtown. Otherwise, I'm pretty pragmatic and have a lot of the same things. I did want to comment on the community advisory group. I have a little bit of a unique perspective here because I actually was a member of the Regina Environmental Sustainability Committee from 2011 to 2013. So it did exist back then. I was a member, and I feel like it did some good work and it had a lot to contribute. It was similar to the accessibility committee, and I felt like we did a lot of good work back in that, from when I sat on it. I don't know what happened to it between now and then. I lost that history. But I do some, fully support the creation of an advisory group, similar to that, and doing that. So I will be supportive of the advisory group. So, I don't know more questions here. Then in that, I don't know a lot about, a lot of these things yet, I guess. So I guess some report on the stormwater utility fees would be useful, especially in comparison. But yeah, I did want to say thank you to Counselors Zakidniak and the advocates here for your continual efforts on making sure sustainability and environment is a priority. I think it's difficult for council and for me to see this as a holistic picture. Because when we're talking about anxiety, we talk, we heard a lot about environmental anxiety today. There's also anxiety about paying your mortgage, and there's anxiety about getting into a building if you have a disability. And there is anxiety about affording the rent. And every decision we make in the budget is huge. And there's a whole bunch of priorities which are stacked against each other right now, and we're in a difficult position, all of us. And it's really hard to look at one aspect of this budget without looking at everything else. Because we are called city counselors, and I feel like we are counselors because a lot of times, our delegations and our assistants who are coming to us have these huge things which need to be addressed. And it's hard, and budget is hard, and this is hard. And there's just a lot of different things. So seeing everything holistically is hard, and I commend everyone who comes here and makes a case. So thank you for that. And you are seen. And I don't know if everyone will get what they want, but it's a process.
Thank you, Counselor Flores. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so through the chair, I think to, just think back to what our acting city manager shared with us, this is asking for a report. And I think for us to make informed decisions on anything, we need that information. And I think this is a proactive way for us to get that information. I also think it's very important to be careful about not relaying information that's not quite accurate because that sticks with the public. And this motion is simply asking for a report so that we are aware of what the implications of making decisions surrounding these issues are. And I think for me, that is very helpful. I think that is something that would help us make those decisions in a way that we take all that information into account when the time comes. I think it's also very important to remember, as it has been said many times, this does not impact our upcoming budget. Anything we do will impact future budgets, but that's why we need to make those decisions well-informed. So to me, this report makes sense. I think we've heard from the community, and we've also, whenever we talk about spending money, we need to talk about not just the immediate dollar value, but what that investment looks like for our future. And our energy and sustainability framework is thinking about that. And I think for us, it's the responsible thing to do to take that into account. Because it's not just us today. The decisions that we make as a municipality impact the future of our kids and their kids' kids. And it's not, I don't think it's responsible for us not to take that into account. So again, this motion is asking for a report to make informed decisions in the future. To me, that makes sense, and I hope that my colleagues can see that and support that for what it is, and perhaps not get hung up on details that are not accurate to what the motion is asking for. So I hope that we can support making informed decisions when the time comes, and that's what this motion is asking for. Thank you.
Counselor Radins, go ahead.
Okay, so I see this motion as a whole motion, and so I support those that want to separate it. But I feel that we're asking for a report only, and I can support and see what comes back on that. I feel that the motion is a whole and is acceptable. I feel that we are supporting environment and sustainable framework, and we show that we are actually listening to our residents. And when the time comes to make the hard decisions, then that will be a different discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I will go to Counselor Zakidniak to close debate. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As mentioned by one of the delegations today, the, according to our own reporting in the resilient Regina strategy, it could cost up to 3.1 billion dollars by mid-century to our province if the impacts of climate change. So there is a cost associated with an action. I also did want to note that it actually is part of our mandate, according to the Cities Act, and I will, I have this point pulled up, to foster economic, social, and environmental well-being. That is our mandate within the Cities Act, which is something that we sworn, that as part of our, when we were doing our swearing-in, we swore to uphold the Cities Act. And also, you know, as administration stated, they would likely do point one A with or without this direction from us. So I think I've tried to, my intent here is to find ways to advance our unanimously approved by two council, energy and sustainability framework without simply going to a mill rate increase. That is what I'm trying to do, to keep it affordable for folks. And so that is my intent here, to find practical ways forward that we can support the implementation of our framework without simply going to a mill rate increase. And as noted, we are simply getting a report back about recommendations for all of these things and how different concerns may or may not be addressed, or administration could also tell us that they don't recommend doing something, and here's why. And I guess the last, so also, in our budget deliberations, we unanimously approved doing a comparison of how we stack up with other communities regarding other revenue tools aside from the mill rates. So this would include user fees and investment income. This is an attempt to look for other revenue tools, which we unanimously supported, and I think it's important to try and keep future mill rates down. The timing of this is a bit unfortunate. I had intended to bring this motion earlier in the year. As you know, I took, I had to have a personal leave. And so now it's getting a bit conflated with this year's budget, which it's not. This is something that we will, we'll get this information in 2026 and can determine whether, what steps we wish to take or not at that time. So I'm asking for your support as I'm looking for other ways for us to follow through on our commitments without simply going to a mill rate increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Zakidniak. So there will be five different votes. So the first vote will be for one A and two. And two is not on the screen. So I wonder, is there a way we can?
Does everybody, is everybody clear on what they're voting on for the first vote? When I say one A and two, has everybody looked at one A and two? Counselor Manzoni?
I'll wait till you get to the second part of the vote because that's where my question lies. So once we get through this side, then I'll pipe up for my question.
Okay. Counselor Burton, you have a clarification. Go ahead.
I would like to move to separate one A from two.
Okay, so there will be six votes. So hold on one second. Yeah, so just looking at this, sorry, I'm going to get the acting city clerk to speak to this.
So through you, Chair, to separate number two, it really is connected to points, like to all of the other points, because it indicates that it would report back if all of those other points pass. So I don't really think we can separate out point number two if the other ones pass. I don't actually think that, like, two doesn't belong with one A because one A has its own separate report. Two refers to all of the other actions in terms of a report. So I don't know how you wish to do that because we have separate votes on, you know, I, I'm not going to do the I thing. So we have separate votes on everything, but the report back in two relates to everything else except for one. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep. Hold on one second. Okay, I'll let the acting city clerk explain that part on the reporting. Go ahead.
Through you, Chair. So just so that members understand, just given the fact that we've separated this out, it will be understood that point number two applies to each of the separate votes. Because if one of those passes, a report would need to come back with respect to that item. Understood?
Yep. Okay, so to be clear, we won't vote on number two. We'll go through all the other points, and then we will make sure that the reporting is incorporated properly as described in the meeting today. So we will not vote on point two. We will vote on the other points separately. Okay, so we will now vote on one A. One A, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on one A. 1A, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on 1A.
Through, through you, Mayor, the vote on point 1A is carried in a vote result of 8 to 3. The following members voting in favor as follows. Counselor Fro, Manzonielli, Turnbull, Burton, Radins, Zekidniak, Flores, and Mayor Bishinsky. Those voting against are Counselor Siklis, Bezo, and Rasovic.
Thank you. So we will now vote on 1BI. Thank you, Counselor Manzonielli, for that. 1BI, I'm sorry, Counselor Manzonielli, you want to speak to that? I just remembered.
I want to make sure I understand how this is gonna work properly. 1BI includes the sentence review and recommend additional tools to fund and accelerate sustainability efforts, including but not limited to. So basically, I have exceptions to a couple of these, but that doesn't mean I want to limit, uh, administration's ability to come back with a smart recommendation should something like, um, point, uh, "I" pass, um, which is why I wanted to separate them out. I could see some wisdom in point "I", uh, "II" and "III", maybe not so much, but for, um, administration to review and recommend additional tools, I think is quite smart too. So is that, uh, if one of the three passes, that step by administration will be taken, is the clarity I want.
Ask the acting city clerk, go ahead.
Uh, through you, Chair, that is correct. So, for example, if, when members vote on BI, if that is voted down, administration will not be doing any work to bring any information back as directed in that point.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to ask the clerk to start the vote on point 1BI.
Through you, Mayor, the vote on point 1BI is carried in a vote result of 8 to 3. The following members voting in favor as follows. Counselor Fro, Manzonielli, Turnbull, Burton, Radins, Zekidniak, Flores, and Mayor Bishinsky. Those voting against were Counselor Siklis, Bezo, and Rasovic.
Thank you. We will go to vote on 1BII. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on 1BII.
Through the Chair, the vote on item 1B, sub-bullet 2, is carried in a vote, or sorry, is lost in a vote of 6 to 5. The following members voting in favor as follows were Counselor Fro, Radins, Zekidniak, Flores, and Mayor Bishinsky. Those members voting against were Counselors Siklis, Bezo, Manzonielli, Turnbull, Burton, and Rasovic.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to vote on 1BII. That's, uh, B3, 1B3Is. We'll ask the clerk to start the vote on that one.
Through you, Mayor, the vote result on item 1B, sub-bullet 3, is lost in a vote result of 7 to 4. Those voting in favor were Counselors Radins, Zekidniak, Flores, and Mayor Bishinsky. Those members voting against were Counselors Fro, Siklis, Bezo, Manzonielli, Turnbull, Burton, and Rasovic.
Okay, and finally, we will vote on point 1C. So I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on point 1C.
Through you, Mayor, the vote result on point 1C is carried in a result of, a vote result of 7 to 4. Those voting in favor as follows. Counselor Fro, Manzonielli, Turnbull, Radins, Zekidniak, Flores, and Mayor Bishinsky. Those voting against were Counselor Siklis, Bezo, Burton, and Rasovic. And for the record, I just want to indicate that items 1BI and 1C also included, um, a report back as noted in point number 2.
Thank you very much. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Counselor Siklis and a sec, and Counselor Radins. And just a reminder, we will be proceeding with our, uh, remainder of our special, uh, meeting, forecast budget meetings, uh, to finish the one up from yesterday. So we'll be proceeding that in 15 minutes. So is any, oh, sorry, anyone opposed to adjourning this meeting? No, carried. Thank you, everybody.
I'll just remind everybody that you have to log out and then log back in. We're on the receiving file, so just make sure you log out and log back in. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting, the special council meeting, back to order with respect to item CM 25-14, 2026-2027 preliminary service forecast, public facing services. And so going down the list, I am at Councilor Radens. Go ahead, Councilor Radens, for your questions.
Thank you. I just have to get there. Wait a sec, can't get out. Okay, thank you for all of the work again on this budget process. It is transparent and shows accountability on all levels of this process to our residents and for us, though the information may not be easily accepted by all. Overall, it streamlines the process that is easy to follow, understanding, digest, and shows all areas that is funded and equally provides the how and why of how we come to the mill rate amount, as we know math is a very accurate science. On the motion regarding the history as put forward by Councilor Bezo and FRO, I know we talked about a full picture of the history, and so what I'm looking for is, and the story is, I would like to add the language so it's clear in that I want to see, can we include the following information, I think, in my amendment number two, is how much the city has grown over the course between 2016 and 2025? I think we made that amendment there yesterday. And how has that growth affected the service requirements and demands? And are we meeting those demands? And were there shortfalls, or are we keeping up with service on our status quo, on a status quo basis?
Can we just give us a second here?
Sure.
So just to clarify, Councilor Radens, you want to add, you're looking to add to point number one?
Yes, so it kind of ties in line with one, three, and seven, I think it is. I think around the history over the 10-year period.
Okay, so if it's related to multiple, we'll make it a separate bullet point-
Sure.
-to point to those other bullet points.
Okay. And so I'm hoping that it'll also cover the dollars spent actuals, FTEs, and did the staffing meet what was required, or was it short? Did staffing service and dollars meet the needs of the city residents or slash residents over the time period as requested? This is, yeah, I covered the three points, but so we're making it our own eight. So this added, sorry, I'm kind of trying to follow my notes here. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask Administration, I'll go to Mr. May, just to comment on timing and context and that for you, Councilor Radens. Go ahead, Mr. May.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you for the question. This is a pretty heavy lift. This is much more than just grabbing some three sets of numbers that Councilor Bezo had suggested. This is falling more into the line of what Mr. Anderson talked about yesterday, where we know that we want to get to analytics that are more in-depth and informative, but that the process to do that would be to talk this through with Audit and Finance Committee, and then come up with a list of things that we could achieve. So for that, I'm not sure that we would be able to pull this off in time for November. The other piece that strikes me just reading number A is requirements and demands. How is, set by who? What requirements, whose demands? What are we measuring to?
Okay, so what I'm thinking about the data and collecting it is just how, okay, so how is that being met by the city? Like, the growth in that comparison, I think, is what I'm asking. Like, so have we, over that time, it should show whether we were still meeting our service requirements? Maybe demands is the incorrect term to put in there, but...
Thank you through the chair. Still, overall, I would say that this is pretty tough for us to achieve by November.
Yeah, just reading through this, Councilor Radens, this looks to be similar to some of the information that was asked for before by Councilor Bezo, and Mr. Anderson had indicated that it might be better served to put that through the Audit and Finance Committee and then kind of funnel that through over its own timeline, just given that this doesn't appear to be achievable to this level of detail before the 2026-27 budget.
No, that's fair. I think, though, I'd still be looking forward to perhaps, even if it's down the road, like, I mean, for coming in the next year or two, or for the next budget period or cycle, because I think the information, we talked about showing that full story. And so if we're making decisions on, you know, service and staffing and things like that, I don't want to see that, like, information being missed, is my point.
I'll maybe ask Acting City Clerk to speak to it procedurally for what you're saying there.
Through you, Chair. Councilor Radens, I'm listening to you, the conversation that's happening and your concerns. So there's a couple of procedural options for you. I would not say that today is the place to put this, because this is specifically a referral option for report, for information that Administration can report back on by November to assist with Council's decision on the consideration of the proposed 2026 budget. So you could, understanding that Councilor Bezo is planning on bringing something forward to the Audit and Finance Committee, the two of you can maybe connect to make sure that these are brought forward at that time. Or at budget time, this is some direction that you could give to Council, is something, or not to Council, sorry, to Administration, that you wish for them to do work on in 2026 in preparation perhaps for the 2027 budget.
Great. I'll reserve it for next, yeah, thanks. Okay. Okay, so my next point is, I know that at last budget cycle, we'd put forward a motion on playgrounds to find $1 million to build or refurbish playgrounds, and that was proposed on March 17th on that budget meeting. And so I think we tweaked it just a little bit in reference to, it's the same amendment, I think, that we're looking for, and that's in this year. Can we put it up, Martha? Thanks. Sure.
Okay, just look to Administration for any comments. Go ahead, Ms. Bryden.
Thank you through the chair. So this was allocated for 2026, and it is included based on the March resolution. So that report will be coming back prior to the budget conversation on our plan for how we are prioritizing the 2026 work on playgrounds.
Okay. Okay, so then we don't really need that, is that what we're saying? Because it's already going to happen?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I just did not want it to be missed, so playgrounds is on the conversation right now. So, okay. Okay, so... Okay, so I'm trying to help out my colleagues on the last point here, in reference to the snow clearing expenses from the past winter in the budget and for future winters. And is there a reserve? First of all, is my question reserved for snow removal? There is a, yeah?
Go ahead, Mr. Doni.
Through the chair, there is a winter maintenance road reserve set up, and so the way it works is that if there's any surplus from any given year, it goes into that reserve, and then that can be used for future years. Unfortunately, we've had some heavy winters in the last couple of years, and I think it's around $14,000 right now.
$14,000? That's in the reserves right now? Okay, so I'm not sure where a number of $948,000 for snow clearing is coming up. Last, there was extras? Okay. Is that going to be rolled into the reserves?
Mr. Doni, go ahead.
Through the chair. So for 2025, any over expenditures for winter road maintenance would be into the overall deficit that was talked about earlier today, so it'd be part of the 2025 deficit that may occur at the end of the year.
Okay. All right, well, that's it for me then. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mancinelli, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm going to kind of take this in a different direction through the chair. I'm going to kind of direct this to the media in the room for a second. I'd like to note that I've seen a report of a 13.5% mill rate increase for Regina, show up on a lot of media articles. I don't know if there was a misunderstanding, but just to clear the air, that 13.5 is quite out of line with past years in Regina when we first announced the budget number, and the reason being is because this is the first time of doing a budget this way. Generally, when we've done a budget, Administration has taken, for example, an 11-step process and implemented the first eight steps of the process, and come up with a public-facing number a month or two later than right now. You know, for example, that number might be something that would get attention in past years, like 7% or 8% or 9% even, but generally it would have been whittled down from a larger starting number behind the scenes by Administration without Council or the public's knowledge. So in the vein of that, I'd like to ask a question through the chair to Administration. Being that usually you start this point in private, what are common numbers for you guys to have started out at this point? You know, a $40 million deficit, 20 points deficit in the mill rate? What's the behind scenes look like in past years, so we can have a little bit of understanding on what kind of shape we're in, through the chair?
Mr. May, go ahead.
Through the chair, thank you for the question. As I'm sure you can appreciate, depending on changes in the environment and what's happening with the city over the years, the starting point was up and down and varies from year to year, but this is not untypical of where we start with a gap this big to close.
Have you dealt with a larger gap than this in the past?
I've only been in this role for the past few months. I was in a similar role, but that was a decade ago.
Through the chair, I'd like to hear Ms. Bryden. She seems to have an idea here.
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. I can, yes, we have dealt with, we have started with a larger gap than this historically. Not necessarily every year, but certainly, yes.
Okay. So right now, we have a bunch of laymen working at this. I know there's some really handy home mechanics that come to me from time to time, and they've got some pretty innovative fixes, and they're really smart. And I like to think that maybe I'm the same way in this chair, but there's professionals on the other side of this. You, I'd like to know what some of the go-to moves they've used in the past to get that number down before Councils even lifted a finger. Do you guys have mechanisms in the background you'll be applying besides Council's questions? And how will that look when you come back to us? Can you share some of that information?
Go ahead. Through you, Mayor, to Councilor Mancinelli. I don't think there's any one response that would hold the same as any year. I think part of the, part of the impetus for Council to go through with this new process is that you wanted to see how the sausage was made, because there would be times when Administration would be reading the room or reading the tea leaves to say, hmm, well, we kind of got a sense from Council they don't like that, or a number of members would stand on the floor and say, well, X percent is unacceptable. Okay, well, we would start to look at that and say, well, if we're going to meet a revenue ceiling of whatever mill rate increase that might be, we then had to go in and arbitrarily at times say, well, this is what we're recommending. The difference that this year is in two ways. One is that it's all open to everybody, including you and the Council, you and the public. And secondly, and I think the mayor alluded to this the other day in his remarks, where he said that he would be planning to put some financial parameters around this at a subsequent meeting, because Administration needs a target or a range of targets from you in terms of the revenue, because there will be a shortfall. So nobody should be confused. There is a shortfall. The decisions that you're going to have to make is, to what extent are you going to fund in various, in various ways, including a mill rate and other mechanisms, to close the funding gap? And if the funding gap is closed halfway, then half, there'll be a number of things that will not get done. And our responsibility is, once you have given us some financial parameters that say this is the funding shortfall, then we will take that information and we will give you a menu of options, including, as the mayor alluded to, with a risk analysis attached to them, to say, you know, if you're trying to save X, well, you'll need three of, three of this, or this has to be reduced by X million. It's all going to be in a quantum based on the funding that you've indicated at some point in rough terms, because it's not final till December. But we can't do any, we're really in a tough spot until you give us some financial parameters. And in the past, Council has always at least gone around the table, and we've got a sense that, well, okay, we're kind of guessing that maybe, you know, 7% or 8% is the tolerance. Then we have something to work with. But again, we're making those arbitrary recommendations on a paper to say, well, you got to cut this, you got to cut that. We're not going to say you have to cut this, or you're going to have to cut that. This year, we're going to say, here are your options on this menu. Choose them, we will implement them. But we will tell you what the implications are of each and every one of those things that you are putting on this referral list. I hope that helps.
I can totally appreciate that, and I appreciate the correlation between where the funding cuts to what point of a mill rate increase might look like for laymen to use too, because those are a lot of tough decisions, so I think that's a pretty smart way of doing it. One move I've witnessed from Administration in the past was reallocation of investment income towards servicing some of that gap. Knowing that I made a motion and it was enacted for that investment income to go into the general fund reserve and the asset management reserve, and that's a lever no longer available to Administration, I'd like to add a point, to have Administration come back to Council with the recommendation on a healthy level of reallocation of that investment income to help service the gap. I know that's something we've used in the past. Wanting the transparency of that investment income to show up on the books was the reason for that motion, and also not wanting to overspend before we kind of caught wind of what was going on, was the impetus behind it. But also knowing that that money is used to keep our mill rate at bay in past years, and it was one of the levers or the tools that Regina residents had at their disposal through their investment dollars in their city, through the work being done. I think it's important to put that to use again in this budget year, so a smart recommendation from Administration, being that, you know... So a smart recommendation from administration, being that, you know, they're the educated ones. I would appreciate that coming back. I do have to say that in another... Do you need to say that again? I'd like administration to come back with a recommendation on redistribution of investment income for the 2025 budget year. I don't think I have to go deeper than that. All the mechanisms on why it's moved is evident through everything that happened in the past. So I don't have to explain that. Just the actual recommendation I need corrected.
We can ask Mr. May to weigh in on that, just to be clear. Mr. May?
Thank you. Through the chair. Yeah, we could take a look at that. I would say, however, the motion that you were speaking to was about what we did with the investment income that was over what we had budgeted for. And it was being, sometimes it was being used to deal with a gap, a surplus or a deficit at the end of the year. But we can definitely take a look at how it gets used. A, maybe the first place to use that excess investment income is to replenish our reserves rather than covering a deficit or a cap in funding for operations. Given that you, it's never one, it can be one-time bonus funding that you're receiving or excess revenue that you're receiving. I would rather not build our ongoing operations on one-time revenue. So I think we can speak to all this complexity when we report back.
Totally agreed. Just for an example, to make sure I'm understanding you, we talked about that needed equivalent mill rate to support the debenture we were getting. The investment income shouldn't offset that mill rate when we're budgeting. But it could be used for maybe a capital project that's tax paid that we could redistribute as we go through if there is a excess over budgeted. And so you would come back with a budget amount and excess amount and some options? If they could fall in line as I've described?
Yes, through you, Mayor. I will concur with Mr. May that if there is surplus investment income, we should, we would recommend that council seriously consider replenishing reserves before you do anything. Because our reserves are not, no one could say they're at an incredibly healthy level. But if and when they got there, or if it was your prerogative, again, it would be to something a one-time. You do not want to get into any kind of of system whereby you're using this one-off money or found money. Because sometimes investments will, on a year-to-year basis, may not, may go crashing down. And you just don't use them for operating, you know. So it'd be one-time.
Understood. Currently, that money goes into reserves to replenish the reserves. I guess what I'd be asking for is just an awareness of the investment income, if over budget, and what replenish the reserve in case we're really tight, so we know what the levers are. I'm not wrong for thinking that was used as levers in the past, correct? Okay, thank you.
So I'll just make sure what's listed on as a referral for that information. Does that make sense, Mr. May?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, we can deal with that.
Okay, perfect. Back to you, Councilor Mancinelli.
Yeah, I forgot to write down a note. So I got to make sure I go through my mental checklist here to make sure I talked about everything. Just be a second. That's right, that's right. Oh, no, Ctrl, Alt, Delete. I'm stuck. As I was saying, I wanted the public really to know that this is a new way of budgeting. That was a really shock and awe, 13.5% mill rate increase that was broadcast by the media. I was happy to answer a couple residents on it. I hope they take the time to watch some of these meetings, become aware on what's going on. That's the purpose of these. And I hope the media uses this opportunity to maybe update that headline so people know why the education's being there for their benefit, so they can have belief in their municipal government. And so, you know, we're trying to provide the transparency they want and to have belief in the actions we're taking so we can have good feelings about our community. And that's really at the heart of this. So it's a hard time. It's hard to go through this. We want everyone to understand what we're up against. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Turnbull, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a few questions here. I guess we'll start with parking meter fines. I think that's timely. So to the chair, I'm interested in parking and what our comparison would be to parking meter fees and fines to other comparable cities. But also, what would it take to deviate parking revenue out of the budget to downtown initiatives or sustainability?
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair. So I would just like to speak to the second part of that. And then I'll defer to Mr. Kalem to speak to the fines and comparisons to other cities. So I think in order to do that review about applying parking revenues directly towards downtown services is part of some of the work that we're actually undergoing right now. And you will see some work coming forward in relation to our downtown and the levels of service that we're providing and how we might be able to increase those or change those levels of service and how that might be funded. So I would say that that is some work that we are already internally doing. Mr. Kalem, if you would like to speak to our comparisons.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So off the top of my head, I don't have a comparison ready. But certainly a referral motion, we can get this information for council. The only one I'm aware of is Saskatoon. Their per-hour meter fee is $2.50 versus our $2. Keeping in mind that they have around three times the amount of paid parking in their downtown core versus our downtown core.
Okay. Along those same lines, I also wanted to do, request a possible jurisdictional.
Councilor Turnbull, is that, I guess, just to be clear, did admin say that they are currently looking at that jurisdictional scan, or do we need that up there?
That's what I did with him.
Through the chair, I think in terms of the jurisdictional scan, and I'm speaking for Mr. Kalem. So actually, in theory, Curtis should be speaking to this. But I think he indicated that he could do a jurisdictional scan.
Okay, I just want to make sure we had it up there right. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Tried to do some homework. And along the same sort of thing, jurisdictional stand with public EV chargers, maybe comparison of other number of city-owned publicly available electrified stalls for EV or hybrid vehicles to that of other cities or revenue sources there. Did you want to comment to that?
Who'd like to speak to that? Mr. Doni, go ahead.
Through the chair, I'll speak to it. I think probably our facilities team potentially. Well, I guess Jamie's here. But I would say we could do a review for other cities and see what we can come back with for November.
I have a few of these. And another one on my list is actually, I want to ask about snow removal benchmarks. Again, compared to some of our neighbors. So the snow removal, like how we line up with our timeliness and that. And the reason I want to ask that is because what I've heard is that we actually have better snow removal. And I've heard good things about our snow removal. And when it comes to winter, we get a lot of feedback on it. And I would like to actually show the information to be like, actually, our snow removal. And so that is why I would like to actually be able to tell our residents how we compare with that and the amount of money we put into snow removal.
Mr. Doni, go ahead.
Through the chair, you know, we do a fair bit of work in comparison with the city of Saskatoon, of course, because we're very similar environmental conditions. And so I think we have that information relatively at our fingertips. I'll just ask Mr. Warren to expand that to see if that would be applicable to other cities? Or would we maybe limit it to Saskatoon, knowing that that's pretty well the same environmental conditions?
Mr. Warren, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. So over the last, I mean, it's a number of years, we've done some benchmarking when it comes to winter maintenance expenditures, kind of per population, like per capita. When we last did this work in 2024, I thought I had this information. We were sitting around, for the 2024 budget, we were sitting at about $47 per capita, whereas the average of Winnipeg, Saskatoon, Edmonton was $54 per capita. In addition, we, up till 2022, we were participating in the MBN Canada benchmarking. And that historically showed that Regina fell short, or I guess was below the average spending when it comes to winter maintenance activities when compared to other Canadian municipalities. Regina's 2022 cost per lane kilometers was $3,835, which was lower than the national median of 6,174. So we have done some benchmarking around that. And if I wanted to compare just the 2025 winter maintenance budget with the city of Saskatoon, city of Saskatoon's budget is $18 million in 2025 for winter maintenance. And the city of Regina is 11.9. So very comparable city, and we're significantly lower than that. But we could come back with, you know, some documentation around that.
I think Ms. Bryden had a comment as well.
Thank you through the chair. This isn't with reference to winter snow maintenance, but more in relation to point number nine. So I'm back to the parking and downtown initiatives. I don't know what the "or sustainability" part is. Are you talking about downtown initiatives? And then general citywide sustainability, or downtown sustainability, or, well, just for clarification?
Well, today's motion, we talked about, in council, we talked about parking fees. And that motion was looking at it possibly to offset some sustainability things. So just holistically, if we were to deviate parking revenue off the budget to go somewhere, what would that mean? And so I just wanted to include options versus saying, I think it should go here or there. Because I don't know the answer to which. Like, I'm not saying downtown or the motion that was earlier today. But what would it take and what, yeah, what would that mean?
So through the chair, I will share that we are currently working on, like, as I mentioned earlier, downtown levels of service and initiatives, and perhaps using a portion of the parking revenue to fund those items. I cannot speak to the sustainability piece. So that work will come forward with the budget already. But I can't speak to the sustainability piece. I think that the comparison of parking meter fees and fines to other comparable cities, that's what Mr. Kalem has already indicated that he can do that. I don't know if we can speak to how, what kind of an impact on sustainability any kind of parking fees would have.
I'm fine with removing it. I'm just trying to be cognizant of the discussion that was held earlier and some of the discussions we had. So.
Okay, so you're okay removing that, just in the context of what Ms. Bryden shared?
Yes, I am.
Okay, where are you going? Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr. Doni. I didn't see your hand up there. Go ahead.
Through you, Mayor. Number 11 there, I think I would just recommend, as Mr. Warren said, everything is basically tied to budget. So let's just include comparing the budgets. And then we'll also compare the timeliness, if that's okay.
Councilor Turnbull, is that okay with you?
Yeah, 100%.
Okay.
Okay. And I did have a question to the chair. I'm not sure how to make this a referral, but with our municipal corporations, there's ways there to support them. So I was wondering, do we have many grant duplications or duplications of subsidies with our municipal corporations? Like, do we know if, let's say, we support something and then also one of our municipal corporations does, and if there's any sort of duplications of services or grants?
Like services for, like compared to any of the services that we provide in the appendices here? Because we should be, if we're talking about partners, I just want to make sure we tie it back to the particular budget discussion. So if you're talking about services, does our partners leverage our services with respect to ones here?
I'm going to come up with a hypothetical. So if we are giving a grant to people who love purple balloons and REAL is also supporting people who love purple balloons, are there duplications where they are getting funding from both of us?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, to Councilor Turnbull's question, we essentially have two municipal corporations, EDR and REAL. And it's our understanding here at this table that there is no duplication of grants, you know, for supporting a festival or et cetera. But I would suggest that that's a fair question to ask the partners when they appear before Executive Committee later this fall with their budgets. You should be able to ask them, you know, what is your level of corporate funding? Or, you know, what do you do for community initiatives? And are any of those duplicated by the city? I'm going to go out on a limb, and I don't think there are any, but I will stand to be correct.
Yeah, or subsidized, or, so that would be my question. Okay. And then I do have a question to the chair. Currently, well, there's always lots of job postings out for the city, and there currently is lots. I was just wondering, in the process of budgeting, do we post the job postings before the budget is approved? Or like, or do we wait till after the budget is approved before the job postings go out for new positions? Because our...
Mr. May, go ahead.
Typically, we do not post a job until there is budget to support that job. So new positions that are not yet approved would not get posted.
Okay, so all job postings which are posted have already been approved. They are not new proposed jobs?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I did have a question with the Parks Master Plan's naturalist. I think that was on overview and what the context for this new position is.
Ms. Bryden?
Thank you for that question. Through the chair, when the Parks Master Plan was completed, of course, there is some goals in there related to the naturalization of some of our green spaces. And as we evolve and move towards that, we, the plan identified that we would need a position called a Parks Naturalist to help us and assist us as we move towards those more naturalized spaces and sorting through what types of plantings, et cetera, that would be required, as well as, you know, potential support in the community for those types of things.
Okay. And to the chair, I have some questions about the capital project planning through facilities. It was talked about in this portion. Is this the right part of the budget to ask those questions?
No, we'll have the capital work, we'll be coming in a separate meeting. So I would save those ones with the capital work, specific for that meeting, which we will have a meeting coming up for that.
So anything respecting capital project planning through facilities would be a following meeting?
Yeah, we have one scheduled for capital work. Yeah, you betcha.
Okay. I'll just double check to make sure. And then just to confirm, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to confirm to the chair that the playground motion, including the community grant and stuff, is coming to us in a future meeting?
Ms. Bryden?
Thank you. Through the chair, the plan for 2020, so we're undergoing a parks assessment right now. But we do have that funding available for 2026. So we do need to understand how we are allocating those funds for 2026. So the team is currently working on how that will work. And then that report will be coming back to council prior to budget.
And that will, will that include the community grant portion as well?
Through the chair, I will defer that question to Ms. Burton.
Ms. Burton, go ahead.
Thank you for the question. And through the chair, yes, it will address the proposed additional $1 million for playgrounds. That includes a community grant portion of that and how we would spend that money on playgrounds.
Okay. And are the community grant and that 1 million all rolled into one, or are they two separate things?
At this point, we have just considered the $1 million as a lump sum and what we would use of that for a community grant, and then what we would use towards our own playgrounds. So there would be a portion of the $1 million that would become a grant.
Okay. Okay, I think that answers my questions, I think I actually made it in my time, I didn't think I would, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that covers everybody, so with that, we will go straight to vote as a referral motion, so we'll go straight to vote on that. Okay, the vote is up. Councilor Fro, can I get your verbal vote, please?
Hey, word, thanks, buddy.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
Through you, Mayor, the motion is carried unanimously. For the record, Councilor Zikniak was away for the vote.
Thank you, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Councilor Siklis, can I have a seconder? Councilor Burton, any opposed? Thank you very much, carried, thanks, everybody.